I'd like to call this study session Lakewood City Council for Monday, July 26th to order. The first item for discussion is a review of the second quarter 2021 police report. And for this, we have Chief Mike Sorrow.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson and council members. So we have quite, quite a bit of information to go through tonight. Not sure. Just keep going. Okay. Quite a bit of information to go through tonight, a little bit of our usual second quarter report. And then I do have a report on some of the legislative updates that I think everybody's heard a lot about. This, the information I'll be presenting there is almost exactly what I presented to our department several weeks ago, after working with our legal department and others, just to, to make sure that we were reading the legislation right and interpreting correctly. With the, we do have a little bit of a technical slowdown tonight, so I'll be asking the city clerk to advance the slides as we go. So I won't have control over it, but we'll go and get started with the second quarter report. As you can see, the, we start off with some of the, just the usual basic information is the, where the districts are that you'll see referenced in the report. Next slide. There's actually for, as much as we've heard about, you know, spikes in crime rates and other things in Lakewood, we're doing pretty good, and I have some graphs to show that here in a little bit. There is one category that you'll notice that is up, and that's in aggravated assaults. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in detail in a few slides, but by and large, we are, Lakewood is doing very good as far as our crime reports go for the quarter. Next slide. And this is one breakdown we do by district, and it's based on sort of a proportionality comparison with crime rates versus population for each district. And you could see that for persons crimes, it's District Two, and property crimes, it's District Four. Persons crimes, our District Two is down in the Springbrook area, and property crimes are the business areas or the, the central business district. And then you can see the total group crime comparison. Next slide. So a total crime by quarter, and this is, you could see 1376, that is the lowest quarter we've had in the 10 years that we've been keeping stats under the NiBRS format. You know, and I, I talked about the increase in aggravated assaults, but I've always said that our prop, our, our total crime rate is driven by property crimes because that's a higher volume crime. We see more of that than we do proper, or persons crimes. Next slide. So in just the persons crimes by quarter, you'd see, we have seen an increase, as I talked about, and that's attributed almost exclusively to aggravated assaults. Next slide. And property crimes, we did see a sharp drop or continue to see a sharp drop. Some of that, I'm going to guess, is due to under-reporting or not reporting. We do know that there are some businesses who, retail businesses, who just don't call or confront shoplifters just as a matter of practice or policy. They've just weighed the cost benefits of, of it and just have elected, in some cases, not to deal with it and just write it off as a loss. So we do know that there are some thefts that are going on, mostly in the retail sector, that are not reported. That's not all businesses, but that is some. And society crimes, you can see, and these are the, all your vice crimes, drugs and prostitution. And I would, you know, I, I feel safe in saying that this is, oh, in large part due to the, the Blake decision and just not decriminalizing, but changing the criminal sanctions for drugs and, and just how it works. So that's where we were for the second quarter. And then accidents, a little bit of an increase, but definitely sort of a leveling off. But if you look at the trend there, if you had a curved trend line, we'd, we're still low. And this is compared to how we've been in the past few years. And I will say that I think a lot of that has to do with the, the safety improvements we've made or you all have made to the roads, both widening and, and sidewalks and just, just general improvements add up to safety in the roadways. Next slide. Now, here's a slide that I want to show you that, and I, I used to include this in all the quarterly reports, and then I, I stopped because it wasn't really telling us anything new. But this will come up in our conversation about, when we talk about the new legislation. So I wanted to, to share a little bit with you, and I'll call your attention to the yellow blocks are the dis, the types of calls that are dispatched in every, every district. And in particular, notice that there's the, the category of welfare check, which is a very broad category. And it, it's not reporting any specific crime. It's somebody calling, saying, I have a concern about a loved one, I have a concern about an employee, I have a concern about this person I'm seeing. That's just a very broad category, and I think is worth noting the volume of those that we go to when we talk later on about the impacts of some of the legislation and what we are, or are not changing to. Next slide. So this does creep in a little bit to the third quarter because it's in July, but it is just given that it was the big topic of conversation leading up to the Fourth of July, I wanted to give you just a, one brief slide or graph about the documented, the calls for service related to fireworks. And as you could see, on the Third, Fourth, and Fifth, sharp declines from the last, or at least last year. And on the Fourth itself, it's the lowest in eight years, it looks like, seven years. So those are calls for service related just to fireworks. And I can tell you as well, I was out on both the Third and the Fourth in those evenings, and the calls for service in general were fairly low. They're, they're relatively quiet nights. And there were definitely fireworks, but both the calls for service for all type, call types, and for fireworks were, were low this year. Next slide. So in the significant incidents that, that we're, we highlighted in the report, that we had the two homicides and two shootings, the, both homicides were fairly notable, the, or received a fair amount of media coverage. The first one was the catalytic theft, or catalytic converter theft that was interrupted by the person living in the truck, shot the, the victim and then drug him behind his truck. And the shooting at Max Deli down in Springbrook, the, the person in that lived, but I, I highlight that because of the life-saving efforts that our officers took when they arrived on scene, applying a tourniquet, which most of our officers have been carrying with them for a couple of years now. And then we also had the, the homicide at American Lake Park, which was the, there was the shooting homicide. It was two people that didn't know each other, were in a fairly minor verbal altercation that escalated quickly when the suspect shot the victim and was, and fled, was subsequent, subsequently captured by other law enforcement that had saturated the area. In fact, it was a Washington State Patrol trooper that, that found the suspect walking. And then finally, the, the shooting that I, I think I highlighted in one of the shift recaps as well, was a 16-year-old kid that shot, it was in a verbal altercation in, in front of his house and shot at somebody that was in the road, essentially. And that person lived, but notable just giving the young age of the, the shooter. And I talked about crimes against persons and some of the, the ups and downs. And property crimes had a decrease, and we even had a slight decrease in vehicle thefts, which, if you'll remember over the past year, were kind of a problem for us because vehicle thieves were out and, and stealing. There wasn't a whole lot we could do about it once we caught them. But we did see a very slight decrease in this last quarter. I'll take any decrease, but we still have a ways to go to get that to even close to an acceptable number. Next slide. So aggravated assaults, one of the things I looked at, so at our, obviously our total, that was like the one big increase we had was in aggravated assaults, in persons crimes. And when we looked at the types of weapons, and just as a refresher, aggravated assaults can be an assault that's with a weapon or where the injuries are so serious that it, it amounts to a felony. So we looked at, but typically it's where there's a weapon involved. So we looked at the aggravated assaults where there was a weapon and the types of weapons used from the first quarter to the second. And you can see that there was a 78% increase from the first quarter to second quarter in all aggravated assaults. And the increase in just guns is an equivalent increase. So I think what we're seeing is just an increase in overall gun crimes that's contributing to the, or was almost solely accountable for the overall increase in aggravated assaults. And there isn't always a victim associated with, with these incidents either. It can be a drive-by shooting where somebody calls in and says, somebody was in the road shooting. We don't know if they're shooting at our neighbor's house or our house, but we've recovered shell casings and we're, we confirm that a shooting did happen, but there might not have been anybody hit, and we can't say for sure who was shot at. So in those cases, there isn't necessarily a victim associated with it, but it's still counted as an aggravated assault because of the, the nature of it. Next slide. So one of the things too that was, is this happened to come up as I was preparing the, the report. We do some work with the ATF through Project Safe Neighborhoods, where we and a lot, and other agencies will submit recovered shell casings to the State Crime Lab for entry into the, the database that IBIS and NIBN that catalog, catalogs and stores all the ballistic measurements on these shell casings that are recovered. Well, we got a hit from one in Lakewood, a shooting where nobody was hit, but it was one of these incidents where somebody reported shots being fired. Officers responded, recovered shell casings and submitted them, and this is what it came back to. I think it's fascinating that a single firearm is linked through the ballistic comparisons to all these different shootings going from as far north as Everett and far south as Gresham, Oregon, which was actually a, is, is an unsolved homicide. So I'm not exactly sure where that, you know, factors in when we talk about gun crimes, but it's not, it's not always just, you know, one crime, one gun per crime, and then they throw it away or it's never used again. Oftentimes, we see guns get traded around and used as currency. And here's a perfect example of that, where one firearm, which is still outstanding, by the way, is traced to, what, four or five, you know, nine different shootings up and down the I-5 corridor. That's a great question. I, it was, I'm sure, a handgun, but I don't remember the caliber of it. Next slide. Okay, now is where we'll, we'll get into the legislative updates and some of the operational impacts of those updates. And what I'm going to present to you is what I presented to the department. And some of the, the legislative bills that I'll talk about upfront aren't, don't have the operational impact that some of the others do, but I have those in there just for information, just so everybody's aware. And just because there are some things that would impact what, you know, our officers do or, or, or could impact their, their careers in, in some ways administratively. First slide. So the Office of Independent Investigations, this is an independent office established at the state level where they will have the, at their discretion, the ability to come out and investigate officer-involved uses of deadly force. Now, they have the discretion to come out. The guidelines have not been set yet for what, you know, what they'll use to decide when to come out or not. They will, they're actually not supposed to be, or they're supposed to be active or up and running by July of next year. So in that time, they have to select a director, hire investigators, and put together all their protocols and everything else. And having gone through the formation of PC FIT, I can tell you that's a very aggressive timeline. And so we don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but because it's, it's discretionary and they're not taking on the responsibility of investigating all of those statewide, we still need to have some, all agencies still need to have some option for an independent investigation team. And in our case, that's PC FIT. So this is in place, but it doesn't, it doesn't change anything that we're doing related to officer uses of deadly force or PC FIT. We still need to maintain that. Yes, sir? The, I think it would be one or the other. We would, and the, the specific protocols haven't, haven't been put out yet, or I don't think they've even been decided yet. But we would, it would be up to us to notify them that here's what's the, what we had happen. Here's the incident, and see if they're going to come out or not. If they're not, then PC FIT would take over. If they are going to come out, then we, PC FIT would hold off and we would just wait for them. There is a provision where they can go back and review old cases. I believe the language says something like, if new evidence is presented. Next slide. So audits of investigations, and this is, again, more for, just for general awareness, that the State Auditers' Office now has authority to audit all IIT investigations, so our PC FIT investigations. And they also have the ability to audit every agency's training and certification requirements, which we report every year to CJTC, the amount of training that we have. And, and they've kept track so far, well, forever, as far as I know, of each agency's training and making sure that they meet the state requirements. So I'm not exactly sure what this is going to look like, if they're just going to review what CJTC has on every agency or if they're actually going to come in and, and perform a separate independent audit. So the potential impeachment evidence, this requires prosecutors to, to provide clear definitions of what potential impeachment evidence or Brady evidence is, and requires us to disclose Brady or Pi within 10 days of, of discovery. I, this actually, I, I don't see is necessarily negative. We, there, I, I welcome a more consistent definition of what potential impeachment evidence is. And since the prosecutors are going to be the ones using it, they should be the ones to set what the definitions are. So we're just waiting on them to tell us what the definitions are, and we'll just, we'll comply with the reporting requirements. To the prosecutor's office. It would be the Pierce County Prosecutor's Office and our municipal prosecutor.
And then they, they make a determination whether it has to be disclosed to the defense counsel.
Next slide. So data collection, this is going to be done, and I, I put possibly WSU. I'm pretty sure it was WSU where they're going to be the, the data center for all this information, where agencies will report all uses of force, and it's for collection of, and analysis of data. So the, the data will be sent to the, to WSU, but it'll have the officer's information and the suspect's information redacted from the report. So it'll be just about the use of force. And in this, it's not just physical force. Well, and to back up, they don't define a use of force. They kind of leave it to departments, some of this, some uses of force are obvious. A taser, a punch, a strike, an arm bar, things like that are obvious. There might be some things that, that where definitions vary, but we haven't gotten a clear, hard definition. But I'm confident in our policy and what we consider reportable use of forces as gathering what the average citizen watching would consider a use of force. Now, one of the things in here is pointing a firearm at a person. Not at low ready, not just having it out, but pointing it at a person is deemed a use of force by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. So that is something that will be reported as well. This was also be a fairly minor change for us, because we've always, with the exception of pointing a firearm at a person, we've always done, I think, pretty extensive reporting on use of force through our Blue Team software program. And so it'll be pretty easy for us to just forward that information on to WSU for retention. We don't exactly know what that process is going to be yet, but a lot of this is reporting we've, and tracking that we've already been doing. This will be, you know, definitely a bigger lift for some other agencies that don't have, you know, especially smaller ones that, across the state, that don't have this, the, the software in place to, to track it or to report it. But for us, this will be fairly easy.
Chief, on this is a particular state agency tasked with oversight? And do they have regulatory rulemaking authority?
That part I don't know. All I, as, as much as I know now is, is we're going to be required to report it to WSU.
I was looking at this on a national basis. It's very clear that there's not a uniform definition. I mean, they, they're all over the board as far as what use of force is. Some places consider verbal command to be, don't go anywhere, stay right there. That's a use of force in some places, and other places you can, or and they also compliant handcuff.
Right.
That's, that's one that seems to go both ways, about 50/50.
There is, so compliant handcuffing, I tell somebody, you're under arrest, put your hands behind your back, and I put, put handcuffs on them. There are some places that consider that a use of force. But I think when we're talking about trying to measure an action that could, could cause severe injury to somebody, I, I think it, I don't, I think we do those efforts a disservice when we include something like compliant handcuffing, because that's not what the, a lot of the reporting language was intended to capture. So we do not consider compliant handcuffing a use of force. Next slide. So some of the driving while license suspended changes, and I don't know if you remember this coming up a few weeks ago or maybe a couple of months ago now, the state did away with suspensions due to failure to appear for traffic violations. So if somebody would get a speeding ticket, they wouldn't show up for court or couldn't pay, and they would, their, their license would be suspended. The state did away with that. And the, the, what I highlighted for officers is that doesn't really change anything for them or for us. If you pull somebody over and the Department of Licensing tells you that this person's license is suspended, then that's what you go by. The Department of Licensing actually had a deadline to reinstate all the licenses that had been suspended for FTA, and that was a couple of months ago. So that deadline has come and gone. So we just have to rely or, or trust that DOL did their job, and that when they tell us someone's license is suspended, it's for something other than FTA, and it's a legitimate suspension. Next slide. So the Blake decision, this was also been a few months in the, in the making. The, this, the bill that was passed to address the Blake decision made drug possession a misdemeanor for the, the, the first two years, I think in 2023 or '24. One of those two, it switches to a, just a, an infraction, just a ticket. And what it does is it requires officers to offer treatment and move to jail for the first two contacts. Now, the trick there is there is no statewide database that, that tracks contacts for, between officers and an individual for drug possession. So there is really no way to, to effectively measure that. Now, and I, I think I've, I've spoken to you about this before, where the UPCS or unlawful possession of controlled substance typically comes with another offense. We don't just happen to find drugs in somebody's pocket. They've been arrested for shoplift or trespass or, or whatever DUI, whatever the other offense is, and a search incident to arrest, we find drugs. So then you've got the original charge or the originating charge, and then this, this other charge or secondary charge of drug possession. None of this affects the originating charge. It's just the possession of drugs that this would apply to. So the, the direction I've given our officers is, you know, you can still just arrest them for, i- if you deem that that's appropriate, arrest them for originating offense, take the drugs and book them in as contraband and, and submit them for destruction. That, that is still fine. We have, because there is also a requirement that we give out a referral for treatment. We have also created little cards that have treatment referral options on them, so we can hand out the cards. So even in the event where we arrest somebody for the originating offense and book them for that, but discard the, the drugs or, or book them in for destruction, we give them this card or can give them this card for a referral. To track contacts? I don't believe so. We have not. We have not. I mean, the, the priority is really, I mean, we have, we have so many other places where our efforts are needed. Trying to come up with a, a database where, you know, everybody that's contacted for drug reasons, their information's entered in, and everybody has, has access to it, that is a big undertaking. And I just don't, I mean, that, that would be a very, very low priority for us right now.
So are you planning to do anything just internal to the agency, the department?
Probably not, no. Because that would be, I mean, we're talking about, you know, you know, again, creating a a central database for officers to report into and for something that has really not been or that is being, whether you call it decriminalized or deprioritized, we just have other other places we need to to put our efforts.
So do you envision there even being a scenario where we would move beyond referral?
On drug offenses, not for a simple possession. I mean, it's possible, but no, we'd be looking more at distribution. So drug sales, if we is would be our focus as opposed to any sort of possession.
I'll have a question on that. It's it's interesting to me because it kind of depends on the level of possession, I would think, because one might have something for personal use versus, you know, a shoebox full of stuff that would be possessed with the intent to distribute. So what point do you make a decision on the street on that?
It's going to be about kind of the expertise of the officer and their determination as far as what they have in total. Do they have packaging materials? Is it a quantity that is more than just what would be considered, you know, personal use? It's, you know, or do they have a lot of traffic coming and going from their cars? Is it is there other evidence of of distribution?
So if if we've picked up somebody or at least had a contact, maybe a second one. Kind of one wonders whether the officer would make the judgment that this person potentially not only has a problem, but is distributing perhaps, you know, to others in the neighborhood or whatever. It just makes it challenging if we have no base to track the contacts.
Right, which is why it's, I mean, it it was put into law, but it's going to be very hard to implement.
No.
Next slide. Recording of interrogations, and this one doesn't start until January, but this requires electronic recordings of all custodial interrogations of juveniles and any adult felony suspects. Notifications required but not consent, and there are exceptions. And you all have, you have to doc document each exception in a report if you have this exception. If the suspect says they'll talk, but they don't want to be recorded, you can do that. But it has to be documented in the report or preferably documented on a recording. If there's a good faith belief that the recording isn't required. So if the officer has what he thinks is a misdemeanor, interrogates a suspect over that and finds out later that, well, no, it amounted to a felony, but you didn't record, that's a good faith belief that the recording wasn't required. Or the safety of an individual, and that would be if there's an informant that would be whose safety could be jeopardized if they give a recorded statement. Or then the the other catchall, other exigent circumstances. The the, this is another one that really isn't a huge change for us, isn't a big lift for us because we have in-car cameras for recording. We've had audio and video recorded interview rooms at the station since we moved into the station. We're going with body cams now. And we also, once this came out, we bought a bunch of little handheld recorders for officers to have in the field. We're working now on the protocols of or the procedure for uploading that those recordings into our our evidence system before we actually give them out. But for us, this isn't a a huge lift, it's a change. But it's it's not, it's not a huge change and and nothing that we can't can't handle. There are some agencies out there who this for who this is a huge change. And it is going to be a a big challenge with the expense of it and just implementing it. So but it's it's what we have to do. So and I include the transcript is not required mostly for the comfort of our own transcriptionists who you get one audio recording and have to have transcribe it. Could just one recording could take a couple of days, just depending on how clear the audio is and the the communications are. So the thought of them having to transcribe every audio recording that we get would probably send most of them out the door. But it is specifically not required, and they spell that out in the bill.
Chief.
Yes.
Thank you.
As well.
You record them saying, we we will talk if you don't record, if it's not being recorded, you can record that part of it?
Yes.
But then can you use what they say after that? If they confess to something, can you use that information?
Oh, yes, it's, I mean, it the the rules of of law still apply as far as admissibility of evidence in court. And, you know, whatever said to the officers, the officers will document as best they can. It's, you know, the best practice, if you don't can't record, is to have another witness there. If you don't have that, you document it the best you can. And then when it comes time for trial, the lawyers argue over the admissibility of it.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, next slide. So juvenile access to attorneys, this is a pretty big change. And this, yeah, there's no way around it, it's just a big change. But the so access to attorneys must be given before they waive Miranda rights and prior to any custodial interrogations and prior to any consent search. And what that is, so is you, you know, say there's, you know, we respond to Clover Park High School for somebody that, you know, the teacher suspects there's a gun in a student's backpack. And we ask the student if they want, if we can search it with their permission. They can't consent to that until we put them in touch with an attorney. The other option is we we just take it and rewrite it, rewrite a warrant. And the kind of the interesting part is this, this cannot be waived by either the juvenile or the juvenile's parent. So if we have a situation where we're, we have a juvenile suspect, we want to talk to them about something and their parents there, even if their parent is saying, you don't need a lawyer, you're going to tell these officers what they want to know, they they can't waive that on behalf of the child. So we have to put them in contact with an attorney.
Do they increase the DAC funding for all the potential counsel that will be needed for this? And it's a huge lift.
That is a huge lift. And their DAC has been tasked with coming up with a, you know, a, I guess, a resource list for officers to call. But yeah, it will be huge.
They funded DAC for Blake and resentencing, but I don't recall seeing any funding for this.
I don't, I don't recall that either, that doesn't mean it didn't happen.
And it gets worse. Senator Darniel failed this legislative session, but is vowed to reintroduce a bill to raise the age limit for the definition of a juvenile to 21. So that 19 and 20-year-old felons would be treated in June of court absent a specific order out, and this would apply to them too.
Not yet, not yet.
For all purposes, if this bill passes, no exception.
18. Now, this does not apply if the juvenile is a victim of trafficking. So we we arrest a juvenile for prostitution, we treat that person as a victim of human trafficking. So it would not apply to to that person. So because we're not interviewing them for the purpose of charging, we want to try and get them into into services. And then officers may, if there there's not an attorney available or it's just, for whatever reason, it doesn't work in the field, if they don't need a statement from the suspect to to book, if they have probable cause based on all the other evidence they have and and say it's a it's recorded or witness, there's enough witnesses, they can just book into Raymond Hall without putting them in contact with an attorney. But that means there's no, you can't interrogate, you can't ask them anything or or search anything. Next slide. Correct.
Any crime, right?
That's for any crime. So the duty to intervene and duty to report wrongdoing. So these are, we start to get into a little more of the the police reform legislation that has some wrinkles to it that I think might have been unanticipated, or maybe they were. But so the the duty to intervene excessive force, it's when in a position to do so. And they define excessive force as meaning force that exceeds the force permitted by law or policy of the witnessing officer's agency. Now, the amount of force used, it's still based on the totality of the circumstances and what the officer knew at the time. So for another officer, a witness officer, to be in position to intervene, they would have to know what the other office, what the the officer using force knew. But the where this, what we found is when we start reading some of these bills together, like the use of force bill where we talk about less lethal and this, there are disagreements in amongst some police agencies about how the the use of force bill is interpreted. So you have, you know, say we ask for mutual aid from another agency, and their agency does not allow less lethal and ours does, and they see our officer is about to use it, per this law, they're to either intervene or at least report it because it's in violation of their policy. It says the witnessing officer's policy. So I think the, when I read this, it's it's almost as though the assumption was all of our policies are the same and we interpret everything the same, and that's just, that's not the case. And then wrongdoing is conduct that is contrary to law or contrary to the policy of the witnessing officer's agency, provided that the conduct is not de minimis or technical in nature. And again, this, it goes back to the witnessing officer's agency. And this is a bit of an improvement from the language of the original bill because it didn't define wrongdoing. It just said you had a duty to report wrongdoing, and there was no definition of it. So I think everybody recognizes that there's broad spectrum of what people interpret as wrongdoing. Next slide. So decertification, there's CJTC has an expanded role in the decertification process. And the well, the process itself was expanded. And the investigations are at the discretion of the CJTC. And they can decertify for, they can do mandatory or permanent, temporary, or issue just warnings, I think. But there are categories or 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 activities that are listed as mandatory decertifications. And those are what I I have listed up there. I don't think anybody looks at those and thinks, so that's, you know, that it's a problem if an officer gets decertified for committing any of those offenses. Next slide. The they also have discretionary decertification or suspension offenses. And here you can see these two are not necessarily, you don't look at them and think, oh, you know, it's okay for an officer to do these things. But I point these out because there are things like making statements verbally, online and writing, or gestures involving prejudice or discrimination, having affiliations with extremist group organizations. And I think that some of these, they'll just, I I think should anticipate legal challenges or pretty significant legal challenges if it does get to the point of decertification on these. Now, and don't ask me what unsafe firearm practices means, I I don't know. But one of the, so there, these investigations that they do will be at their discretion. And in talking with the the director up at CJTC, and they're scrambling to try and put together all the investigative procedures and everything to be able to do these for the entire state, mind you, what they are looking at are doing investigations where the agencies aren't taking care of business themselves. So they they are, I think, viewing themselves as the backstop for for serious wrongdoing by officers. One of the, and I'm not sure how this is going to play out, but one of the the potential consequences of this is if we do an investigation and we get it done quickly and we see that it was, you know, some sort of serious violation, but maybe one that we wouldn't terminate for, and we issue this person a significant suspension. And then they come back to work. And then CJTC does their investigation and says, no, this person needs to be decertified. You cannot terminate somebody based solely on the decertification. So if we've, and once you dole out your discipline, you can't go back and say, okay, well, no, now they've decertified you. So no, we need to redo the discipline on this incident to match, for to make it termination to match the decertification. So we could, there's potentially the scenario where an agency issues discipline, CJTC comes in later and decertifies the officer. But because you can't terminate based just on the decertification, we have to retain that person and figure out what to do with the decertified officer that we can't terminate.
So how are we wrapping all of this up in our collective bargaining agreements?
That's that's a million dollar question. I don't, I think a lot of agencies are trying to figure that out right now. I don't have a good answer right now.
When are ours up?
Where I believe in mediation right now.
So do we, is there going to be a central register for officers who have, I would say, been examined under this new scenario? So that when they they move to outer outer Grand County, they they know what's coming?
Yes, so CJTC will keep track, I mean, they're already the the keepers of the records for certification. So they'll keep track of all these. And some of the background, there have been added or enhanced background requirements too as part of this bill where agencies are required to check with CJTC and I think the prosecutor's office to find out if they are either decertified or on the impeachment list. Next slide. Can you click it and get the second part up there? Thank you. Okay, so before we get into the tactics bill, 1054, and the use of force bill, 1310, there's two key concepts that you you kind of have to understand or at least recognize in order to see where some of the, I guess, shortcomings or or problems might be with these in in the conflicts. So reasonable suspicion and probable cause are different legal thresholds for detention. Probable cause is, i- if you'll look, articulable facts and circumstances known to the officer that would warrant the officer to believe that a specific crime has occurred and that the sus suspect is responsible. That's, and that's what you need to have to make an arrest. Reasonable suspicion is you have articulable facts and circumstances that lead an officer to believe that criminal activity has happened, is happening, or about to happen. And that the there's a reasonable belief that the person being stopped may be involved in that particular crime. So they're just different levels of suspicion. It's reasonable suspicion and probable cause. And reasonable, and detentions based on reasonable suspicion come out of case law, Terry versus Ohio. And you'll hear the term Terry stops, that's where that comes from. One way to think of it is reasonable suspicion is discovered, probable cause is developed. Reasonable suspicion usually happens pretty quickly as you get to the scene and and just take in what's going on. Probable cause is developed through interviews and collection of evidence and just review of the crime scene. So, next slide. So the tactics bill, House Bill 1054, is, or some of the highlights that I'll go through, they, this is the bill that prohibited chokeholds or vascular neck restraint. And I'll show later in the use of force bill that it is essentially allowed through language in there, but only in deadly force situations. This bill also addressed the use of gas, either C, there's three kinds of gas, CS, CN, and OC. I, there, each one of those has like six syllables in in each word, so I couldn't begin to to remember what what they stand for. But CS and CN are now only allowed in three circumstances, where there's a barricaded suspect or hostage situation or riots. So in barricades or hostage situations, you need command approval to be able to use. And the only people that use that now are really our civil disturbance team or potentially use it or our SRT. And they're getting command approval, we already have been doing it, they're getting command approval now. The big change is with OC, oh, excuse me, with riots. Not just command approval, but to use CS or CN in riots, those are declared riots. It's not just a couple of people gathering, it's their actual riots. The highest elected official in the jurisdiction has to approve its use. So in our case, that would be the mayor. All other uses are prohibited or prohibited, and we do have to demonstrate that other alternatives were exhausted before the use. Now, OC is specifically allowed, it's exempted from this. It's a. It's a, that's like the OC spray that you have in a, in a little can versus something, you can make them that gets launched. But it's not used for necessarily, it's not like tear gas. It's not used for large crowds or riots, right? Yeah, that's pepper spray. OC is pepper spray. And then this is, also had the military equipment section and there's military equipment that was prohibited. And it's a lot of stuff that you, you look at and it's nothing you'd ever think a police department would have, like rocket launchers and shoulder mounted grenade launchers, things like that, and weapons of, of destruction for enemy combatants. Two of the things that I, I call out specifically armored vehicles and less lethal launchers are allowed. The armored vehicles, I call that out because the, the first draft of this bill said armed or did say armored vehicles were prohibited. They changed that to armed vehicles because they don't, in the military equipment bill, they don't say it's equipment gotten from the military. They just say it's, it's equipment that meets these definitions. So if you say armored vehicles are prohibited, that's us even putting a ballistic panel in one of our interceptors or having a, an armored vehicle for an SRT mission. So they did change that to be armed vehicles are prohibited. And less lethal launchers, I'll talk more about the, the debate over that when I get to the, the use of force bill. But they, one thing where that is relevant, the reason that comes up, and I'll talk about it later, is they prohibit under military equipment, any firearm of 50 caliber or greater. So, and caliber you measure by measuring the barrel of the firearm. So I'll, I'll talk about that when I get to the, the use of force bill. This, the tactics, officers need to be reasonably identifiable by the agency with name or other information. This goes back to the whole badge number dispute or, or debate. Badge numbers have never been a thing around here, maybe up in Seattle. But we've never had our badge numbers on our badges. When I was with the sheriff's department, we had numbers on our badges, but they didn't mean anything. They just happened to be a number. But all officers have always been required to have their names visible. So this isn't really a, a change for us. This bill also prohibits no knock warrants and that is you go to serve a search warrant, you don't announce or anything. You just force the door open and, and make entry. We have used this, I think, maybe once in my recent memory. This is not something that was used very often. Now, this is, this is, I think demonstrates the difference between law enforcement in different parts of the country. In the Midwest and on the East Coast, no knock warrants apparently were used fairly routinely. And in situations where we would never dream of doing that. So for us, this isn't a huge change and there are exigencies that we can, could possibly use to justify making entry when we would have using a no knock. But the bottom line is we can't ask for them and judges can't give them. So the tactics bill continued. They prohibit the shooting of moving vehicles unless the occupants pose a deadly threat other than the vehicle or the driver. Other than the vehicle, comma, or the driver is using the vehicle as a weapon. So if there's a suspect driving a vehicle and they're shooting out of the vehicle at the officer, that would justify the use of deadly force. But if they're absent that and absent them using the vehicle to drive into a crowd of people, your deadly force is prohibited. This isn't a really huge change for us either. The, the whole shooting moving vehicles topic came up maybe like four or five years ago. And it was a pretty broadly discussed topic and we came down with language that was similar to this. But one of the things that I reminded our officers is think about, even if they do pose this threat, what happens when you incapacitate the driver behind a moving vehicle? There's still, it doesn't stop the car. So you still have those considerations. And we've talked about those well before this, this bill was passed. So it's, I, I, I included it because it's notable, but there's still, it's pretty close to what we were already doing. The pursuit laws are changed in this bill as well. Now here's where we first start to see discussions about probable cause. Pursuits are only allowed when there's probable cause for a violent offense, a sex offense or escape. And I'll talk about violent offenses in the next slide, but for escape, this is kind of, there, there's a specific definition and escape comes up in two different places for us, here and in the use of force bill. But here, a person is guilty of escape for the purposes of pursuits if he or she knowingly escapes from custody or a detention facility while being detained pursuant to a conviction of a felony or an equivalent juvenile offense. So escaping from prison, essentially. Pursuits are also allowed when there's reasonable suspicion that the driver is DUI. Now this is the only place where we see the legislature call out reasonable suspicion specifically. It's for driving under the influence. If you see that, or if you have that, then pursuits are allowed. If it's necessary to identify the driver. Now you'll see my direction there to the department. I told them to disregard this factor because it's ambiguous. I don't know, it doesn't provide any guidance on, you know, when would you need to be necessary to identify the driver in this case, but not in this case. So because there's that ambiguity, I directed our department that that, to, to just disregard that, that is not a factor to consider. If the driver poses an imminent threat to the safety of others and you need the supervisor's authorization to engage in the pursuit, which isn't too different from the way we do business now. Next slide. Now here's when it, it said violent offenses, there's specific violent offenses that are defined as allowing for pursuits. And they're on the left there. Class A felonies and then all those listed. I think what's more notable is what's not included are misdemeanor, any misdemeanor assault, whether it's DV or not. Residential burglary, because it's a class B felony, theft of a firearm is a class B. Assault in the third degree, which is a felony, but it's a felony, it's assault of an officer. That's a class C felony. Hate crimes are a class C felony. And assault of a child in the third degree is a class C felony. So none of those would allow for a pursuit if we did have, even if we had probable cause to arrest that person. Next slide. Okay. So the House Bill 1310, this is the use of force bill. And it, there's kind of two different sections in the way it talks about use of force. There's the use of deadly force than general use of force. So under the use of deadly force, it's when the suspect poses an imminent threat of serious physical injury or death and when practicable, the officers will use the least amount of force necessary. What, there are, there is talk about de-escalation, requirements for de-escalation. But there is, there is language in there that says when practical or when able. Caveats like that, which is critical because if you put in there that you must exhaust all other options prior to using force or deadly force to defend yourself or somebody else from a deadly threat, that means by law you have to do that. So you don't, i- if someone walks up and tries to kill you, you don't have time to de-escalate. You need to be, have that flexibility to defend yourself without having a black, black and white violation of the law. Officers may not use any force prohibited by law except to protect his or her life or the life of another person from imminent threat. So this is where we read the laws to allow for chokeholds or vascular neck restraints when it's a deadly force situation. So when it's a deadly threat. It says they may not use force prohibited by law except, well, these are prohibited by law. So except when it's a deadly force situation. Now moving on to the discussion about just general use of force and when it's allowed. So use of force, again, without a specific definition, but still going by our understanding of, of force. And what we would use, the same definition we would use when we talked about reporting of use of force. It's only allowed when PC exists for arrest or to protect against imminent threat of bodily injury to the officer, another person, or the person against whom force is being used. That's the suicidal person who is actively trying to harm themselves. And when possible, officers will exhaust available and appropriate de-escalation tactics. Next slide. And here you saw the word imminent. Here they define imminent as the person has the present and apparent ability, opportunity and intent to immediately cause death or serious bodily injury. That means right now. That doesn't mean they might be a threat to themselves or someone else down the road. That means right now they're, they're a threat of death or serious bodily injury. The, we saw the same definition of necessary or roughly the same definition. And the totality of the circumstances are still taken into account when evaluating the use of force. So what the officer knew at the time, what, at the time the force was used, the officer's actions, the suspect's actions. Now here, one change is the evaluation of the use of force will include all facts known to the peace officer leading up to and at the time of use of force and includes the actions of the person against whom the peace officer uses such force and the actions of the peace officer. So that's where they evaluate the de-escalation efforts of the officer prior to making a ruling on the use of force. And here again, I, I identify that pointing of a firearm at a person has been deemed a use of force by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Next slide. Oh, can you go back two slides? Sorry. Thank you. So under the, the very last bullet point there, it says when possible, officers will exhaust available and appropriate de-escalation tactics. What's important to note here in the language, it lists less lethal or beanbag rounds, or no, it says less lethal as one of the de-escalation tactics. And in the definitions, it defines less lethal or as including beanbag rounds. So those are the, the little, literally little beanbag rounds that are fired out of either a modified shotgun or you buy a, another platform to shoot them out. But they are defined here and it, in, I think, a very conservative interpretation they're required here. So when we talk about the conflict between the military equipment or the tactics bill and this bill, so we have one interpretation where less lethal because they're typically fired out of something that is greater than 50 caliber. So there's, there are agencies out there that are interpreting that as meaning that less lethal are prohibited because they're considered military equipment. You have this bill, the use of force bill that requires the, the use of de-escalation tactics, which include less lethal firearms and defines them as including beanbags. So there is that conflict there that, that some people are, that, that's been a, a pretty big topic of discussion amongst law enforcement agencies and legal advisors. Here's, here's the reasoning we use to allow. First, I don't know that the military trains to shoot their enemy combatants with beanbags. All of the other equipment that is listed in the military equipment bill are fatal pieces of equipment that are meant to kill or injure your enemy combatants. They're meant for war. Beanbags certainly don't qualify as that. They are, and then you, because of the, the language I just described in the less, in the use of force bill, they are required, you are required to have less lethal. So I don't think, when you look at the language, when you have conflicting bills, I don't think you can look at the intent of the military equipment bill and say that beanbag rounds were included or the launchers were included. I would also look at the, or consider the potential consequence for violating each one. So the potential consequence for violating the, the military equipment section of the tactics bill is potential sanctions maybe against a department or maybe an officer. The consequence of not carrying a mandated piece of, of de-escalation equipment in the form of a less lethal round or not having that at least somewhat available means that you potentially have to resort to deadly force sooner than you normally would have. That comes with a huge consequence. So I think, taking all that together, I am comfortable with our position that we are not taking less lethal out of our officer's hands. We're leaving it in the, in the field to be used when appropriate. So there's, and it's, and it's not just, you know, Mike Zarro's interpretation. We worked on that with our legal advisor and other legal advisors from other agencies gave similar opinions, not all agencies, but some gave similar opinions. So I just, that's where we're at. That's been the biggest topic of conversation and controversy among law enforcement agencies in the past few weeks. So.
So I can tell you the Pierce County Sheriff's legal advice was similar to yours. Whether that's implemented that way or not is another issue. But we've heard that both Seattle and King County have already said, well, the shotgun's greater than 50 caliber. So we consider that a military weapon. It, it shows how uninformed the legislature was when they were passing conflicting bills, but.
Right. But nonetheless, I mean, that's where, that's where your police department falls out and I'm comfortable defending that. Next slide.
Mr. Bransdiner.
Chief, let, let me just ask if, and I know you've given this briefing to the department. But is particularly on de-escalation tactics, is the existence of the way that this language is going to require greater or different training than we've historically done?
Yes. I mean, we're going to be doing things a little bit differently in, in our response. Not necessarily because of the de-escalation part, because we're already doing that. There's how we're able to respond to certain incidents based on the changes to detentions based on reasonable suspicion. That will be the big change for us. And I've got a couple of slides coming up that will show some of those changes.
And then you, you had a slide where you talked about the, and I think it referenced to responding to riots. And that there were certain things that required mayoral approval. And in Washington, there's two kinds of cities. There are mayor council cities, but then there are council manager cities. In our situation, and you indicated it would be Mayor Anderson that would be the person to do that. Not the city manager, even though most discussions about the roles of councils and mayors and the roles of councils and managers equate city managers and, 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 and strong mayors as being at that same level of doing that. So is that something that is specifically been determined, this, for us being a council manager city? That that's where that, but it still would reside with?
Mayor, correct. It references the highest elected official.
Mike, I, I was uncomfortable with that when I read it. So I had it checked to a different source. And the intent of the legislation was to make sure it was an elected official. And that was clear intent of that statute. Like civilian control of the military was the analogy.
That, that'll come up in, with the next salary commission meeting.
Okay. So the next thing I want to talk about is how some of this applies to are the community caretaking function that we frequently engage in. This, not, there is no distinction drawn between criminal suspects or mentally ill folks or juvenile runaways or anything else when we talk about use of force. So when we talk, look at juvenile runaways, no force can be used and no, that's no force. They take off running, we can't tackle them. We can't, you know, put them in our car against their physical will if they're trying to fight and get away from us. their physical will if they're trying to fight and get away from us, um, without probable cause or that imminent threat. This goes from walkaways from CPS, from the Child Study and Treatment Center, um, or any other DSHs, DSHS facility. Now this does conflict, uh, directly with RCW that I have listed or that mandates that we take runaways into custody. So we do have that, that conflict there that, um, uh, we're going to have to resolve in the field somehow, but it's not going to be with, with the use of force. It might end up taking a whole lot of resources, but I don't know how we're going to end up doing that. Well, if they've committed a crime, if they're just a runaway, we just need, we're, we need to take them into custody and get them home or back to where they're, they're reported from. Um, now I have met with, um, because this is a change in how we're doing things or able to, to respond in some cases. Um, I've, I've talked with our partners over here at CPS, their office right over here, because we do frequently, um, get calls, uh, for juveniles that are inside there that have, have walked off and are, are supposed to be in custody there. I've met with the Child Study and Treatment Center, I've met with St. Clair Hospital, I've met with, um, Western State Hospital, just to have this, this broader discussion about, um, you know, use of force and in, in particular in situations where there isn't a crime necessarily hasn't been committed. Um, and involuntarily, involuntary commits for, uh, mental health reasons, um, we need, still need either probable cause or to show the person is an imminent, immediate, like right now threat to themselves or, or someone else. So, um, and I'll have a scenario in a little bit that shows, you know, a, a, a not uncommon scenario that officers could face for this, will, will pose a challenge. Next slide. Okay, so here, we're going to start getting into some of the scenarios. These are what I use, the, most of them, I added, uh, I think one the other day that, uh, um, I didn't have time to show the officers, but when I presented this to the department and I went, went around to every turnout and had face-to-face trainings with everybody on the department, uh, over, uh, presenting this, this, um, this slide deck. So they, these are the, the scenarios I used, um, to, to sort of train them on the changes. And since you had, all had an in-depth education on reasonable suspicion and probable cause, uh, you should all be able to answer these without any problem. Um, okay, so an officer responds to a report of a physical domestic in which a suspect description is given out over the air. Prior to arrival, dispatch updates that the suspect left on foot. As officers came into the area, they see a person matching that description, but nobody has, uh, talked directly with the victim yet. Can you approach the suspect and ask him to stop? Yes. If he doesn't comply and takes off running, can you chase him to capture or physically restrain him? Correct, because you have not established probable cause yet. So what about obstructing? Now there, there is this, um, uh, there is this RCW of obstructing investigation, um, where, you know, if you have this investigation, uh, and somebody is taking an action that, that inhibits your ability to conduct it, you can possibly, you, you can, you know, use this RCW. Um, this, uh, it doesn't necessarily have the greatest reputation among prosecutors. Uh, this charge doesn't, so it is out there, um, as a possibility in some circumstances, but officers need to know that it could be looked at, um, as a, a way of trying to get around the new law, the new use of force law. So there are specific circumstances where I've told our officers, here's where it would be, uh, or could be justified and our, our municipal prosecutor agrees, but in this situation, that would not be the case. Next slide. So the second, uh, scenario, an officer responds to a report of a drive-by shooting with a suspect vehicle described as an older orange El Camino. As officers come into the area, they see an older orange El Camino driving away from the area but not violating any traffic laws. Nobody's talked directly with the, with the caller or been to the scene yet. Can you legally attempt to stop the vehicle? Yes, you can. Um, because you can still attempt a voluntary Terry stop. You can tell somebody, like the, the DV in the first, uh, instance, you can approach somebody and say, hey, I need you to stop. And if they stop, great, you conduct your investigation. It's the use of force that you can't do. So if they take off running, you can't go and tackle them because that's a, a use of force. Here, a vehicle stop would be, uh, the same as a Terry stop on, based on reasonable suspicion. So you can attempt to stop that vehicle because you're not using force, you're just turning your lights on. And if they pull over, great, but if the vehicle pursued or flees, can you pursue? Brianna? No, not until PC is established or you can show that the driver poses an imminent or immediate threat. And until you talk to the victim, until you have time to do a little bit of an investigation, you can't, you can't develop probable cause. You don't have time to do that. That is a big change.
Thank you, but what if the victim is?
We have a scenario just.
Or severely injured.
We have all, we have a scenario that, to address that here in a minute. Um, the, the other thing is, um, dispatchers cannot, um, substitute for the victim. Just because the victim might be telling the dispatcher something and the dispatcher's relaying that to the officer, you can't establish or develop probable cause based on what the dispatcher's telling you. The officer has to go to the scene and get that from the victim themselves. And see the scene for themselves. Now, if you have this situation and you go to stop the vehicle, um, and they do pull over, can you initiate a high-risk stop? And that's one where you have your guns out, um, you're not pointing them at the people and you're just giving the, the people commands to put your hands up and come out and step back to their car. Uh, you can initiate a high-risk stop, uh, on this. Next. Now, do guns being drawn, just drawn constitute a use of force? No. No, not. Yeah, only if you're pointing it at them. So just being drawn, no, exactly. So there's, if you hold it, your gun like this, there's a term called the Sewell position. It's holding it against your chest with the barrel pointing straight down. That's a position where it's, you have it secured and it's not pointing in an unsafe direction. Um, the other term you might hear is low ready, where you have it out and it's, your arms might be extended, but again, it's pointing at the ground in a safe position. That has not been deemed a use of force, pointing it at somebody else. So if you do engage in a high-risk stop and they, it's for this scenario and you don't have probable cause yet, but they pull over and they're complying with verbal commands, you, you have to, you would have your gun out just because of the, the seriousness of the allegation and the, the potential crime, um, you, you have to have it at low ready or, or pointed in a safe direction. You can't have it up at all, uh, in the direction of the documents of the vehicle. Next. Um, oh wait, can you go back one? So once, one suggestion I gave the officers, uh, in this case, was to follow the orange El Camino or the suspect until somebody gets to the scene and advises whether or not they have probable cause. Um, if they do have probable cause, um, then they can stop the vehicle and it's, you have probable cause for arrest, so if they flee, um, then you're also authorized to pursue them. Um, if they flee before then, while you're just following, then just let them go. That's the, the, the direction I've given the officers. Next slide. Okay, uh, this, um, this is kind of an interesting scenario because, um, I'll go back to the welfare check, uh, slide where we talked about that. This would fall under a welfare check, um, typically. So officers are dispatched to report of suspicious person throwing rocks at cars in traffic. Nobody has reported being a victim and callers are not asking for contact. When officers arrive, they see a person matching the description standing next to the road. Can you engage the person in conversation? Yes. If the person walks or runs away, can you physically detain and prevent the person from leaving? No, because you don't have probable cause. And this, um, you'd be surprised at how often we get calls like this for people that see somebody doing something like this, and they may very well been kicking rocks into traffic or throwing rocks at traffic, um, but if you don't have somebody that's calling and saying, hey, I was the victim, uh, of this crime, you don't have probable cause for it. So the suggestion I have is before making any contact at all, is I suggested to the officers that you just watch, just see if you witnessed the same behavior and develop a probable cause for yourself. If you don't, then just leave. Um, there's, there, if you're not witnessing any, the activity that generated the reason you're there, then there's no reason to make contact and risk potentially going down a road of conflict. So just, just leave and don't make any contact at all. Next.
They saw the people who were, or the person who was throwing the rocks at emergency vehicles particularly. It happened just the way you said.
Uh, well, I included that one because I actually heard it on the air, literally while I was writing the, uh, PowerPoint, so, um, it worked out well. Um, here's one, um, that is also fairly common. Officers are dispatched to a commercial burglary alarm at 2:00 AM. When they arrive, the, the, they find a door forced open. Upon searching the building, they find a suspect who flees from the structure. They have not been able to reach the business owner. Can you run after the suspect and use physical force to detain him? No. Uh, you wouldn't have probable cause yet without talking directly to the victim. Uh, the alarm company, just like, um, dispatch can't substitute for victim, the alarm company can't substitute for a victim either. So, and that's, that's going to be kind of a big one. Uh, so here's one that, uh, for a lot of people might sound like a made-up wild scenario, but this happened in Lake, um, and it happened right about the time or shortly before I was, uh, doing this, um, putting these slides together. So officers are dispatched late at night to report of someone dragging an unknown object near some railroad tracks and dumping it. The person then drives away from the scene. Officers arrive to find a deceased person who appeared to suffer multiple gunshot wounds. While they're on the scene, the witness sees the vehicle that dropped the body off and points it out to the officers. The vehicle is not violating any other traffic laws. Can you attempt to stop the vehicle?
You can attempt to.
Yes, you can attempt to because the, the reasonable suspicion, um, you can still act on that for voluntary stops. Next. If the vehicle flees, can you pursue it? No, not until probable cause for a violent felony has been established. And there's, you know, in order to establish the, the probable cause for the violent felony, um, you would have to conduct this homicide investigation and try and, and tie it to this person. So there's no way that, that you, you can't do that in the amount, you know, before the pursuit happens. Luckily, in this case, this person pulled over and confessed. So it was the, um, the, and this was the catalytic converter thief. Right, right, right. Um, scenario six, so officers, and this goes back to some of the, the mental health calls that we deal with. Um, officers respond to Fort Silicon Park for a report of a male sitting in the grass and yelling at trees. He has not committed a crime. When officers arrive, they find the male yelling at trees, clearly hallucinating and not responding to officers' attempts to communicate with him. The male is also eating dog waste found on the ground next to him. Medical aid and a mental, mental health professional arrive and everyone is in agreement that the male needs psychiatric valuation and is unable to make that decision for himself. He screams no when officers try to convince him to go to the hospital. Can you physically restrain him against his will for an involuntary commit? No, you cannot. Um, while he may be considered disabled and unable to care for himself, he is not an immediate threat, meaning right now, um, to himself, uh, or, or anyone else, and he hasn't committed a crime. So those are, um, that, there are a lot of involuntary commits that, that officers do where they just tell the person, look, I know you don't want to go, but I'm telling you, you have to. And the person gets in the ambulance and it's resolved that way. It's actually very, it, very infrequent that, um, they do have to use physical force to get somebody to a hospital, but it does happen. And there are cases where there's people that need treatment that have to be involuntary committed, voluntarily committed, that don't meet that, uh, the new definition. Um, and I do know that, um, Senator Darnell specifically, um, has recognized this as a, as a fly. I think they're, they're hearing from groups other than law enforcement about, um, leaving people like this, um, out to fend for themselves. So there are, there is talks about hopefully rectifying this, but, um, this is, this is act of law right now. So, um, while this is, you know, might be unusual, I still have to give our officers, um, guidance on what to do, uh, with these situations. And this is, um, this is the guidance, you, there will be times when we have to walk away, um, and leave, you know, somebody there that, that clearly needs help. And we are the only ones that have the authority to do this. Um, the fire department can't physically pick this person up. I, and I went and presented this, uh, to, I didn't present this, I spoke about it with Wes Pierce and their medics, just to make sure they were up to speed on, on some of the changes as well.
A person, they similarly can physically restrain or take that person to treatment?
No, they've never had the, the legal authority to involuntarily commit somebody.
And that would mean taking them to treatment against their wishes would be an involuntary commit, like if someone really needs to go to St. Clair, but they say, I don't want to go.
Yep.
Got it, okay. Mr. Bolton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, it's my understanding, because I heard one of the legislators who's in, involved in writing these and he admitted that they're, you know, poorly drafted and they're, they, there's two or three of them and it doesn't, this doesn't specifically match with the involuntary treatment act or something like that. So it's, so the involuntary treatments act says you can do that. This law says no, and so they're trying to kind of ham-handedly figure out, trying to get the AG to say that that's, one of them would be okay. I, I, I'm, in this, I, I, I don't know that we should go out with mental health people and, any of our guys should go out with mental health people until they, the legislature gets this cleared out. I, I mean, I just don't think it's fair to put our officers in situations where they're in violation, going to be in violation of the law. And it's, and it's not our problem, right? Well, it is our problem, but it's the legislator's fault and they have power to, uh, the governor can call a special session and he can get them in there and they can make these fixes. I just, I just, I think in this, this is one where we just tell, multi-care, but we can't help you.
Right, and there are jurisdictions that are taking that approach. And here's one of the problems with that is we don't know the person won't go until we get there. Most of, most of the times we, we, um, they do go. We also don't know exactly what the call is going to entail until we get there. Um, you know, I, I highlighted the welfare check, call title or call type. Um, that's a pretty broad category and there's so many cases where we just don't know, uh, when we arrive, it's completely different than what was put out over the air. Um, and we could be, um, not responding to somebody that, that we could truly help. And I'm not to the point where I, I would take those off the table. Um, I do still, uh, rely on, uh, our sergeants and our officers and their good judgment and their understanding of, of this. That's why it was important for me to see all of our officers face-to-face and present this to them, so they know that their, their decision point is going to be some, you know, pretty drastic and they're, they're going to have to make decisions to, to walk away from people at times when they really need help.
I mean, that's, I, I mean, that's your call, but I guess it just, when, when you have poorly written laws, it creates incentives within the system to game the system. Um, if I'm a mental health professional, say, well, he hit me, right? And so then you can't use, I guess, force, right? Oh, he took a swing at me or something.
Right.
So they'll learn to do that, and I guess that's what, well, the mental health professionals will learn to do.
Maybe, I'm not going to, I'm not going to operate under the assumption that they're going to, the mental health professionals or anybody else is going to lie to us about, people lie to us all the time, it happens, but I'm not going to operate under the assumption that they're going to lie to us about that just to get us to use force on someone. Um, I, I do think that there is still room for officers to respond to the calls we've been responding to, do a lot of good, um, but there will be times when we are going to have to just walk away and leave somebody who, um, needs help and we're just going to essentially have to abandon them. It doesn't mean we don't try, and that's been one of my other messages to the department. None of this means that we don't try. But our, our outcome, once we get there, might be, uh, different than what we've seen before.
Is Bill?
I'm just going to ask, uh, when you get the calls, like you said, with the person talking to the trees, do you automatically have a medical person go with you?
Not automatically. A lot of times we'll go and evaluate first. Um, we, we prefer to have them come at the same time, um, but, you know, it kind of goes. Um, but, you know, it kind of goes back to what I was saying about what we're told over the radio is a lot of times completely different from when we get there. Um, if what we're told over the radio sounds like, you know, this, like if they're down and not responsive, um, we'll ask for medical aid to go with us because there's a likelihood that there's a medical issue there too. Um, but it's not an automatic.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so it appears now that the PD has to be more reactive. So you have to, you'll be at a scene and something will happen and you can't do anything about it, so you'll have to circle back around, do more detective work or whatever it may be. Does that require more resources?
Not, not necessarily. Here's, uh, the guidance for the officers and the change in priorities. So the, if, right now, they get dispatched to a report of a stabbing, whatever it is, they're given a suspect description while they're on the way there. You're looking, you're, you've been trained to look for somebody matching this suspect description as you're driving to the call. Um, you might see this person, and prior to the new legislation, you would stop and detain that person. But you potentially go down the road of having to use force before somebody's contacted the victim. So the priority now is get to the victim, get to whoever's calling, and see if you have probable cause or not, so everybody understands what the guardrails are, um, for your actions. Um, that's, that's essentially the, the biggest shift in how, what, what our focus is going to be. It's got to be get to the call, and I've, I've told them, you might drive right past somebody that matches this, the description and, you know, is, looks exactly like the person that, that did it. You either need to, you know, maybe just watch them and wait for somebody else to go, you know, find out if there's probable cause, but the better thing to do is get there as quick as you can to find out if there's probable cause or not.
I have a, a, a comment and then a question. The comment is that I understand that the Attorney General's Office has been asked for an opinion. They were told it's gonna take at least a year, which conveniently makes it after the legislative session and after next fall's elections. So the inconsistencies can't be a political issue for. The question involves, uh, kind of the lower level offenses that can be gained. Car, residential car prowls, people in somebody's backyard, uh, street racers. They run away, they get to run away. It's the bottom line. Is that correct?
That's correct. Okay, I think last slide. So the final thoughts, I just talked about this, getting somebody to the scene of the reported crime to establish probable cause is a priority. Um, and once an officer establishes prob- probable cause, they need to put that out over the air as soon as possible, so everybody knows what the rules are for, for responding to this call. And even in, I've said, even in the cases of violent crimes, there, they need to protect, prepare themselves mentally. There will be times when they have to just let somebody go and maybe get them later, but work on the case, how, whatever it might be. But just prepare yourself now for that's going to be the case because that is, that's the structure that we're operating on. Um, and when there's a gray area, because you can't account for every scenario in, in training. Um, there is going to be a, a time where something comes up where an officer will be faced with something, and they're not sure if it's, um, allowed, whether it's pursuit or force or whatever, if it's allowed or not, based on the new laws. And here's, in those gray areas, this is the, 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 the advice I gave them, err on the side of letting the suspect go. And I say this because the state made it clear that they would rather a criminal suspect go free than have us use any amount of force. And I don't say that to be snide. I don't say that to be critical of the state. That is the message, um, from the legislature with, with the, the new reform bills. Um, I, I don't think that's off the mark, but officers need to know what, you know, they have to have some guidance to, to help them when they're acting and, um, or need to act, and either, you know, a sergeant isn't available or the decision has to be made quickly. And this is, uh, the guidance that they were given. And then finally, when it comes to use of force, um, there is nothing that requires an officer to be injured or let somebody else be injured prior to using force. And that's important because there, nobody is requiring, uh, an officer to get shot, punched in the face, or anything else before they defend themselves. If they have a reasonable belief that something is about to happen to them or to somebody else, then they're allowed to use force to defend themselves or somebody else. So that is what I have. Um, I think, Veronica, is that the last slide? Last slide. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that, uh, you have. This is, um, just, this is the way it is. These are the laws that we're operating on. So, um, you know, we, it's tough for officers that have done things, uh, the one way for a very long time as far as reasonable suspicion. I will tell you that going through the academy, Terry stops and detentions on, based on reasonable suspicion are one of the hardest things for people to learn, and it's one of the, the mock scenes that people would fail most frequently, um, because it is a hard concept to learn. Um, so, once you get it, you kind of, you, you retain it, you remember that. So I, we're asking officers to unlearn something that was very hard for them to, to learn, um, to begin with. So, um, but, um, we are a resilient bunch. We'll, we'll deal with the laws as we're given and, and make the best decisions we can.
Mr. Whalen.
Have the agencies kind of speculated on how the change to the law might impact either calls for service or the crime stats we reviewed in the first half. What's the, the thought?
Um, I don't know about calls for service. Uh, there might be, you know, in jurisdictions where they've said, you know, "We're not responding to, um, such and such a call," or, or different call types. Um, they might see a decrease in calls because people just might not bother to call the police, even if they actually need help. As far as crime rates, it's really hard to say. I mean, it, um, we'll still catch people, it'll just be a different process, so, um, I, I can't really predict what impact this would have on those. We will. And we do, I present you the, I give you this report portal, so we'll have, uh, running data to present to you.
Ms. Bell.
Thank you. So this is a really big shift, especially for the residents community. How is that going to be continued to be, um, communicated to the community?
Uh, I've taken as many opportunities, well, I have and will, um, take as many opportunities as I can to speak to different community groups about this. As I said, I've spoken to a lot of our partners, um, St. Clair Hospital, um, West Pierce Fire and Rescue, our state partners at DSHS. Um, I, you know, this presentation, and we invited people on Facebook today. Uh, well, we invited them, invited them Friday and reminded them today that, with the, the YouTube link, that this information was going to be presented. Um, and then any opportunity I get, um, to speak to different community groups, um, I'll do my best to do that. There's, I know that some agencies has, have given just, uh, a, a written statement to, to put out there, and I'm not sure how to do that yet, because there's so much that goes into understanding the, the reason for the changes and, um, why they're impacting what we do. I mean, I just went, I don't know what time it is, but I just spoke for about an hour on, um, what these changes are. I don't, I, for me to put something out in writing to the public, I'd want to figure out how to encapsulate that into something very small and brief. Other than, I am willing to go any, to, to living rooms, any groups, uh, who want to hear about this and give this same presentation and talk to, uh, talk to them about it.
And it's, yeah, it's been an hour and a half, Chief.
I know. Apologize. I'll stop complaining about the length of council meetings then, since it's my fault.
Well, you're not on last. It's an important subject, and, and there are indeed unintended consequences to look at things where things looked at individually may seem to be laudable, but when they're all put together, there are some, I think, some short-term unintended consequences that people aren't gonna like. Hopefully those can be fixed. Thank you. Ms. Farmer.
I did have a question about, um, on the, the stats on the orange and yellow page. I was curious about the hangups. Is that, do people call and hang up all the time?
That is exactly what it sounds like. That's people calling 911 and, um, hanging up, whether it's an accidental. Uh, and we've seen those go up with the, you know, the proliferation of cell phones and people getting rid of, of, uh, hard lines or house phones. Um, but it's either, you know, missedials or people dialing and hanging up, people playing with the phone. Um, Western State Hospital does have a couple of, of free public phones. Um, we do frequently get calls from there. Um, so that's, it can be any number of those things, but they, we do get a lot of.
Okay. Curious. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Um, yeah, back to the, to the front of the presentation. Are we still under, are both the county jail and the Nisqually jail still under COVID protocols, or are they changing how they're, who they're taking and?
Uh, Nisqually is, has opened up, um, to a much greater degree than Pierce County. Um, Pierce County is still under the guidance of the CDC, which has several restrictions. And I know Chief Jackson, um, was speaking just, I think, last Wednesday, maybe the Wednesday before, and, um, she said that they had actually just recently had a COVID, a positive COVID test, uh, in the jail. So it's still very much an active issue for them, and so they've got their, uh, restrictions, a lot of their restrictions in place. They've been able to loosen some of them, but for the most part, they're still there.
Okay, so the misdemeanors still go down in Nisqually, all the felon's go to, okay? And they've loosened a little bit.
Okay.
Oh, let's leave it at that. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Mr. Brown's better.
Yeah, Chief, when you gave this presentation to, to your officers, what areas did they have the most questions about?
Just the, the general area, uh, topic of reasonable, uh, detentions based on reasonable suspicion was probably the, the, the most significant.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Chief. Then we'll move to, uh, a review of the home funding for, uh, Lhasa for the acquisition of property located at 8966 Gravelly Lake Drive Southwest. And I don't, Mr. Gomes. Mr. Buor. Ms. Spear. Oh, Mr. Gomes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Um, so tonight I wanted to discuss, uh, in your agenda packet pages 65 to 70, um, is a request from Lhasa Living Access Support Alliance to commit $600,000 in home funding um, for the acquisition of 8966 Gravelly Lake Drive Southwest. So that, uh, the home funding specifically is something that, uh, the city receives on an annual basis. It's part of the city's, um, annual action plan. The funding is allocated specifically each and every year for the home fund specifically are allocated each and every year for activities directly related to affordable housing. Those things can be rental housing, homeownership, um, development of, of new housing projects. Something like this would be something that would qualify. Tenant-based rental assistance, a multitude of things, but ultimately it leads to the development of affordable housing. Um, so this, this acquisition specifically would be a $600,000 commitment to Lhasa for that property to be acquired. The parcel is, um, probably the best place for, for you all. I'm certain you've, you've seen the map. At page 69 in your agenda packet kind of shows the map specifically of Lhasa's parcels that they own, as well as this parcel, um, is proposed to be acquired. So the, the parcel that we're, we're talking about is on the corner of 59th and Gravelly Lake Drive Southwest. Um, it's directly west of the Living Access Support Alliance Prairie Oaks, uh, 15-unit facility that they have right now. Um, the, the, kind of the, the big deal with this, this parcel, and what makes it attractive to Lhasa is future development. So were this parcel to be acquired, um, Lhasa would then be able to have four contiguous parcels. Those four contiguous parcels could be combined, um, into, into a larger development site. It could be used, um, through a planned development district and developed as 2.377 acres rather than four individual parcels. So the, the potential for Lhasa here is we could take a parcel, or we, they could take a parcel through our funding source, um, and develop something that would have been limited to 18 units, um, and develop it to a higher density of 50 to 60 units, provided, um, that it was rezoned multifamily too. So right now, the, the parcel that we're discussing is Zoned Arterial Residential Commercial. The, most of the parcels kind of along that little strip on Gravelly Lake Drive are arterial residential commercial on the north side. Directly across the street to the south, um, are parcels that are, that are zoned multifamily too. So it, it would be consistent with the rezoning to, to the development uses in the area if it were rezoned multifamily too, and that would then allow a higher density development for Lhasa, upwards of 35 dwelling units per acre. So the, the funding would be proposed, um, to be brought, given to Lhasa through a development subsidy agreement. Um, the proposal would be to have a forgivable loan, a 15-year forgivable loan. It would carry an affordability covenant, which HUD would require, so it would have a 15-year affordability, um, as well as it would have a repayment clause. So were the, were the conditions through, through HUD's grants not met? Things like, uh, maintaining all of the houses as affordable units. Maximum rents are limited to, to what HUD allows, um, and incomes are restricted to 80% or below for all occupants. So those would be things that, that we would write into the development subsidy agreement with Lhasa. Some of the, some of the things that have, have kind of come to the forefront that, that would make this, uh, a nice parcel for, for Lhasa and, and something that, uh, we probably won't see again through HUD's terms. HUD, as you all know, likes to have a lot of rules and regulations, and one of the things that has been relaxed very recently, um, based on a lot of projects having increased development costs, timelines being pushed out and so forth with the COVID impact, is HUD has waived what's called their maximum per unit subsidy limits. Um, this parcel specifically, it's a single-family house. Um, it's a two-bedroom parcel. Sorry, it's a two-bedroom house on the parcel, and under current HUD rules, it would not be allowed to, it wouldn't be an eligible property for funding. It wouldn't be, uh, an eligible use. But waiving the, the limits per unit, which in this case HUD would limit it to just over $215,000. Um, by waiving that, it does allow investment in this parcel, so it could be acquired, um, and in essence, land-banked for Lhasa to come up with a, a larger development plan, combine all of the parcels together and, and provide a, a future project where they're going to develop it into additional affordable housing units, which is what Lhasa is proposing to do in the future. Um, until their funding sources come together and, and they get their package for development for this parcel in the future, they would continue to operate it as a single-family residence. The, the rents for that property would be restricted to about $1,300, somewhere in that ballpark. Um, that, that kind of leads us to another reason why it would be a proposed forgivable loan. If, if we're looking at a, a loan of $600,000 for Lhasa, $1,300 would not even come close to debt servicing that loan over the term. So it would be proposed forgivable. The other thing, it does give Lhasa a little bit of, of, kind of leeway in how they develop their property moving forward. It's, if we're looking at a, a 50-unit development, um, that's a, a fairly large-scale development project somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of five to seven million dollars would probably be a, a realistic figure for development. In order to accomplish this, uh, we are looking to move some of our housing rehabilitation funds. The Affordable Housing Fund currently has a balance of $393,027. So we would be proposing to move, um, an amount of $206,973 in the housing rehabilitation funds. We currently do not have any clients, um, waiting in the queue for housing rehabilitation. It's been a, a project or a program that's, that's had a little bit of issues getting projects lately. The house values have been in- The house values have been increasing so rapidly. Um, HUD has a maximum house valuation and both City of Tacoma and the City of Lakewood's house valuations have been incre- increasing quicker um, than we can, we can service those because we're, we've been kind of bumping up against the maximum house valuation. So we haven't, we haven't been able to qualify very many clients. So that has been a problem. So moving the funds to the Affordable Housing Fund would actually be a good thing in this case. Um, it would serve to commit those funds. There is a, a two-year timeline to commit funds. So getting them committed is, is kind of crucial and, and moving those funds along. So that's something that we would be proposing as well. Um, it's, it is consistent with the city's five-year consolidated plan to develop affordable housing. Um, and then I guess moving forward, approval of this, um, should council choose to approve this would be via the next council meeting um, through a consent agenda, or sorry, minute motion through the consent agenda. So with that, um, if you have any questions on the, the project, the specifics or anything, I would be happy to answer.
Mr. Whalen.
Thanks, Mr. Gum. Uh, what kind of parameters can we put on the loan to ensure that there's some semblance of effort to move forward with the multifamily development down the road? Because six hundred thousand for a single-family home, it's in rough shape, is a lot of money. But for this one-time opportunity with the HUD relaxation, I think you mentioned, which I agree with.
Yeah, and I, there, there isn't any real requirement for HUD to, to say what one can or can't put in an agreement. So we would be given pretty much, not necessarily carte blanche, but, but reasonable carte blanche to kind of put together what we wanted. So if, if we wanted to put into the agreement that within the next ten years or whatever time horizon, um, we, we wanted to put in an agreement, we could have a, a development agreement that says it, it shall be developed into X amount of units or the highest, highest uh, use possible within a timeframe. Otherwise, it could convert back to a repayable loan. So there, it's, it's pretty easy to structure that. However, um, we needed to do that or however council chose to do that. So there is, there is easy way to, to write that in.
I, for one, would like to see us consider that and I'll leave it to the rest of the council members. I, I only note on your thought, if we can get fifty units out there, that would be fantastic eventually over time. I, I think your estimate of five to seven million is uh, you know, a factor light because I think, as you recall, we spent six million with those guys to get fourteen units. And that was several years ago.
That is true.
Yeah. So it would be a lot of money, but I think it's a worthwhile project and it's, it's a good way to aggregate the, the parcels. So thanks.
Mr. Brown Stetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I would echo the deputy mayor's thought that I would like to ha- have some way to convert the loan to uh, being repayable if Lassa for reasons doesn't move in a reasonable timeframe to, 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 to secure the funding and, and go to do that. Um, the reas- the, the rezoning of the, of, of the parcels, um, do you envision that being a, um, a uh, something that would, would go on the, on the twenty-twenty-two docket? Or um, uh, comprehensive plan amendments and, and rezones? Uh, or does it need to move that quickly?
I would, I would prefer it to be on the twenty-two or the twenty-twenty-two docket. It, it wouldn't necessarily have to be next year's docket. I mean, it's, it's a project that, that were it developed realistically, it's a, it's probably a two-to-three-year horizon anyways to really realistically jump on this for development. So if it was twenty-twenty-two, even twenty-twenty-three, it would be a, it would be a feasible development timeline.
Well, well, I think moving it to, it's just right in the window for Lassa to request that. Or would it be a city, city request since the, the property hasn't changed hands yet?
Um, Lassa does have a purchase and sale to acquire this. Um, it's, it's set somewhere around the end of August to acquire. So I, I believe that it would be a Lassa request, but I see Mr. Buhr is there. He could probably, he's, he's the uh, expert in this instance.
Yeah, well, well, we're right in the window right now of where entities other than the city have to make twenty-twenty-two requests. So uh, you know, I, I guess it would, the idea would be, we were, because I know for Habitat for Humanity, because they missed the window on some properties in Tillicum, we had to go with a city-initiated request to move a project forward.
Mr. Buhr?
Uh, my preference would be for um, this group to submit a letter to the planning commission, making a request for a comprehensive plan amendment for this next cycle. Letting the planning commission review it, provide you a recommendation, then move it forward to city council this year. You would get that approx- approximately November, December.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Gum, Mayor.
Mr. Volkey. Thank you. Um, Mr. Gum, so um, thank you for the presentation. And, and it's been mentioned by a couple of members here about a timeline or a, or a, or a date certain on that. Can you give us an idea of what they have in mind for the timeline for the project?
Um, the, realistically, when I, when I discussed it with Jan, she's, she's in the four-to-five-year timeline to get this thing going. And I, I, I think that's reasonable. It may even be a little bit aggressive. I mean, a, a project of this size is going to take a while to put together. Um, I have had discussions with, just kind of some, some quick discussion with some of my colleagues in, in the county and Tacoma as well, to see if they would be in favor of supporting something like this. And it, it sounds like there would be some, some support from both of those organizations. So I, I think getting a funding package put together for her is, is doable and feasible, but it does take time. And if, if she goes forward and, and does something like uh, low-income housing tax credits, I mean, those are, you're a couple-year cycle realistically to get funding for those. You don't necessarily get one in your first years of application. You typically get them in your second or third.
Okay, so um, so they would be getting tax credits, some other kind of maybe through Washington Housing Trust Fund. I mean, they've got to line up all these, plus the half a million dollars that they got from the legislature. Is that for construction?
No, the, that's a, that's a completely different animal. That half a million dollars would be to, to redo their community service center. They're, they're looking to add um, washing facilities, so washer and dryer and those types of things and uh, changing the entrance on the one side and, and, and doing a little bit more with the services side. So those funds would be something completely separate.
Okay, so then my other question is, and, and thank you very much for putting all the, what it's currently zoned and if they could, right now it's currently zoned. It looks like they could get eighteen units and you're saying they could do between fifty and sixty units if we did MF two. Um, and then, of course, we're saying, hey, let's put it in the hopper right away and tell the planning commission, we're making assumptions that there's not going to be any community opposition at all. Um, wha- what other options do we have besides MF, between MF two and M, whatever it is now?
Arterial Core, it's, it's, realistically, the, the parcels, there, there's two, R four and residential four and arterial residential commercial. Um, the, the, the other option would be if you zone them, are all arterial, arterial residential commercial, you're looking at fifteen dwelling units per acre. So it's, it's, it's a jump up from the, from the residential four, which is six point four dwelling units per acre. So it gets you a little bit more. So I mean, if, if you're looking at fifteen units per acre, two point three seven is what, thirty-five units or so? So I mean, it's, it's still a higher density than the eighteen. Um, it could be done that way, but I'm not certain the, the numbers work as well for a, a development project, but it's, it's something that they could approach as well.
To get to fifty or sixty, are they going to have to go beyond three floors?
Um, good question. I, I haven't seen a proposal for them. I, I think realistically with the recite requirements and, and the, the spaces that you can have impervious surfaces, realistically, I would probably say yes. Um, I, I think they could make it work with three. They've discussed doing some, some one bedrooms and two bedrooms. They, they don't have a huge demand for three and four bedrooms, so they could, they could accomplish it with smaller units.
Okay. And, okay, nevermind. I'll leave, go, leave it at that. Thank you.
I, i- is there appraisal on the property that's current?
Yes, it was appraised about two weeks ago for five hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
And what's the purchase and sale agreement for?
Purchase and sale agreement was for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But we have any restrictions on purchasing property or contributing indirectly to purchasing property that for more than appraisal?
No, HUD does, HUD does not have any restrictions other than you have to be able to, to justify why you're paying additional cost. And in this case, it's the, the developments that you, you can get from that parcel.
Yeah, I, I share some of the concerns um, that have been previously res- uh, expressed with respect to having a timeline and maybe turning it repayable. If, if uh, that timeline isn't met, I also have some concerns about the fiscal management of Lassa and the cost, absorbent cost of the last project. Uh, in, in keeping with that, uh, one idea that I haven't heard suggested is that instead of creating a cash flow for operations out of the rental of this, that we require some type of trust as a condition of the loan so that, uh, maybe what, what's over their actual expense of operating that unit goes in, essentially goes into a blocked account so that it can be used for the project, but it can't be used to pay people. Because we want, we want, we're giving them an ear income source. And it did, even though it isn't enough to cover, it's about a two-and-a-half percent return on six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but that's still nearly a market return until next year's inflation numbers come in.
It's, it's, that's something that we could write into the agreement. So if, if council did choose to do that, that's something we could, we could add to their agreement. And I, I don't see why Lassa would have an objection to that.
It's probably enough, it might, might amount to enough to pay the architect to get plans that are complete enough to do, get a bid. I mean, that's.
Yeah, one, one thing that Lassa does have is an, an architect and a real estate um, broker on their board. So they, they were able to, to have all of their real estate services donated and they're looking to have all of their architectural services donated as well, so.
Any other questions from Mr. Gum? And as always, as always, thanks for uh, navigating the HUD quagmire for us.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, now we move to a review of the twenty-twenty-one annual development regulations with planning manager Tiffany Spear.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is going to be a brief presentation and uh, I hope that it was informative. I'll just refer to your memo that was in the package tonight, starting at page seventy-one. Um, but essentially, there's an annual process by which the city looks at development regulation or development code amendments that may stem from um, the use of the code by city staff. They see a snafu in there or an inadvertent omission or something like that. There's feedback from applicants where there's a, a need to make a changes identified and/or there's things that may come through regulation or statutory change at the state or federal level. And this year, there's kind of a combination of all. Um, so going into the next slide, please. This year, most of the, uh, or all of the uh, amendments are referring to Title eighteen A. And so some of the things that you see are actually reactions to um, applicants or the staff finding errors that were um, left over from when the twenty-nineteen comprehensive update to that code happened. We're still finding little errors that happened when that huge update occurred. Next one. So this is your list of what they are. First is to insert a map that just explains, shows where the flight patterns for JBLM's operations overlap with the city um, and how that affects particular zones based on where the flight um, pattern is happening. There's a couple of updates regarding directors' interpretations. There's an, uh, several definitions getter, that are getting updated. Um, talking about the review authorities for form-based codes, just explaining who makes the decision, who takes it to an appeal, et cetera. Uh, now that we have two form-based codes separate and apart from eighteen A, which is uh, eighteen B for the downtown suburbia and eighteen C for the Lakewood Station District. Then there is uh, allowing personal services permitted as a use in the commercial one zone. And then when I was just mentioning errors from the eighteen A uh, rewrite, there were um, inadvertent omissions of allowing three-family dwellings in the uh, neighborhood commercial one and two zones and the ARC zone, uh, arterial residential commercial zone, and also three-family dwelling units being allowed in the multifamily one zone. Uh, next one, clarifying the minimum what, lot width within the mixed residential two zone. Uh, looking at fractions and how the city calculates that versus, um, I think right now there's an error where it says round down, where the intent is to round up. Um, parking regulations, there's some changes that are suggested to Chapter eighteen A eight, some of which are proactive, anticipating some um, coming changes to the world of parking. Uh, looking at mechanized parking as an option as time goes by that may actually become more economically feasible than surface parking or, or non-mechanized parking. Uh, and also um, looking at maintenance of parking lots because there are certain uh, actors now within the city that don't adhere to rule. Um, that are, that's just been something that code enforcement has dealt with nu- numerous times. And so it's time to codify and be able to issue um, citations if they continue to, to um, not comply. There was a recent um, decision by the FCC, thank you, it's the acronym, um, regarding wireless service facilities that needed um, some updates to the small um, wireless facility chapter, if you recall, the council recently adopted. And then there's just a number of various RCW or WAC sections that need updating because either it's truly a hyperlink is an error on our city's um, site or the numbers have changed with legislative action from, from various bills. So next slide, uh, I'll go through these very fast. This is the map I was referring to, just to show where those flight patterns affect various zones within the city. Next one. The interpretations is affecting eighteen A ten zero seven zero, talks about the table um, and which uh, ones of those interpretations are appealable to the hearing examiner. Next one. Definitions, so affordable housing is redefined per what's happened with that statutory definition in the RCWs. Next. Um, updating the antenna one in order to comply with that FCC decision as well as there was actually an error in the code where there was some repeated language, so cleaning that up. Next one. Uh, campus facilities master plan, this is going into RCW language and uh, just making the city's definition consistent with that. Low-income household, updating uh, where the project is located, this, the statistical area, era, bleh, area, excuse me, reported by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Next one. Uh, moderate-income household, updating that and uh, changing the multifamily definition as well. I think you'll see that on the next slide. Yeah, multiple-unit housing is, is a new way to refer to that. Taking out permanent residential occupancy, go ahead. Um, updating residential target areas and the new city code that was adopted, I believe, last year um, to comply with some updated uh, ways that the residential target areas were dealt with and doing away with the T-I-U-U-C tax increment, U-U-C. Sorry, um, substantial compliance, how that's defined, and then urban cert, center as well. Go ahead. Uh, changing here, the fact that we do now have these form-based codes and how those are going to be reviewed. So this is just demonstrating that. Next one. These were actually results that were um, called for by planning commission members because they had noticed that there was an omission here uh, when the eighteen A chapter was adopted a few years ago. This is allowing, again, those three-family dwelling units in the N one, NC one, NC two, ARC, and then multifamily one zone. And that's just to make this all consistent with what was already there and what the intention had been. Go ahead. Land use tables, uh, how the director's decisions will be appealable and how it, the director functions in relation to the planning commission. Next. Um, allowing again, personal services within the C one zone. It's already allowed in a number of other commercial zones, so just keeping it there for consistency. Next. This is talking about the minimum width for lot sizes. There are some in the MR two zone specifically called out in eighteen A sixty oh three oh sub- There are some in the MR two zone specifically called out in eighteen A sixty oh three oh subsection A where the lot width is is defined as something other than fifty feet. So this is just to clarify that. And then correcting again that error about how fractions are going to be treated. Next one. This gets into the parking chapter. So making some changes based on moving forward where we see some anticipated development happening within areas of the city and how our parking code should be updated in responsive to those anticipated projects. Next page. And then this is where we start the mechanical parking information. Again, this is anticipated as something that we, the city may start to actually see some interest in over the next reasonable future, reasonable number of years. Next one. Continued. And keep going. One more. The wireless service facilities, this became necessary based on that FCC decision that was, I believe it was either the end of twenty or early twenty twenty one where it happened. So making that edit comply. Next slide. And as we sit tonight, we're at the study session about this next Monday night. A public hearing is scheduled, and then council action, two meetings after that. So happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Wayland. So going back to the top, on the definition of portable housing, it was thirty percent of the monthly income. That's based on the state statute, right?
I'm not sure if it's in, well, yes, it is in state statute, but that's not where that categorization came from. I think it actually came from HUD, and it's been around for a long time.
Okay, so it's not something that's necessarily going to change.
No.
And just anecdotally, is that monthly gross income?
Yes.
Okay. On the fifty-foot lot size, are there exemptions for projects like cottage housing? Because don't they have to have separate tax parcels for each little house? Maybe.
Yeah, the cottage housing code is going to govern that, or it will say this section applies, this section doesn't apply out of other chapters of eighteen A. Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions for Ms. Spear? Mr. Brad Scott.
Sir.
So the, we're scheduled to have a hearing a week from today. And I guess I just didn't notice where that was publicized.
Yes, it was published. Yeah, it was.
And then what material was provided, is available, is available to the public to look at before the hearing?
There's reference to this meeting this evening. Are you, are you looking at things on the website and whether it's visible there or not?
Yeah, whether someone who wants to decide whether to come and offer comments, what have they got to look at?
Yep, yep. I have to say that there's been some internal issues with the community and economic development section of the website that has been kind of fits and starts getting corrected. So I'll make sure that it's been corrected tomorrow morning. But yes, it will be referenced to tonight's meeting packet and also explaining when next Monday's packet will be available, which would be no later than usually is this Thursday or Friday.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have questions for Ms. Spear? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move to reports by the city manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'd like to first call on our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Bucic, as well as our Capital Project Manager Ted Hill to give you an update on the sewer main line that that collapsed last week. And so they're going to talk with you about the emergency response from Pierce County Utilities as well as utilities' next steps and then the the long-term solution to address it. So with that, Mr. Bucic and Mr. Hill.
Do you really want to hear me? Okay. Last Wednesday, Pierce County was notified that they had a sewer leak, a break in their line. Upon investigation, they went right out there and they discovered that it wasn't just a simple break. It was, in fact, a catastrophic failure of a thirty-six-inch transmission main. The transmission main usually passes about three million gallons of raw sewage per day, and it ends up down at the central treatment plant down there in Chambers Bay. So they coordinated with city staff on traffic control. They brought out a whole bunch of pumper trucks and various equipment trying to contain it. They were unable to do so. I will tell you that because of the way the grades are, where the lines sit relative to each other, that the collapsed pipe in Silicon Boulevard, just west of Lakewood Drive, actually resulted in sewage flowing out on Lakewood Drive about fourteen hundred feet to the south of Lakewood Drive. There's a ten-foot drop in head, and the road, if you remember, Lakewood Drive goes up to Silicon Boulevard. Well, it started coming out of a couple of different manholes flowing across the road. And then to relieve the pressure, Pierce County, it appears to be, went over and they popped the lid on a structure that's in the sidewalk. I guess unfortunately, you would say, is that was about ten feet away from a storm drain catch basin. There was no place else for it to go, frankly. And it went into the catch basin, and it flowed through our storm line down to Flet Creek. And they were bringing a lot of different pumper trucks in. They were scrambling, trying to figure out how to address it. We assigned Mr. Hill to my right here as the city's primary liaison with Pierce County. We were in contact with different levels of Pierce County hierarchy to tell them, we're here to help you. We've gone through different things like this, emergencies, and whatever you need, just let us know, and we'll start helping you out. So now I'm going to turn it over to Ted, who's going to walk you through some of the more core details of what Pierce County actually was able to do and how it took them three days to actually get it contained.
Well, good evening. So yes, I had three days last week of a lot of fun. So the map, if you can see it, manhole one is the manhole out in Silicon that had the collapse about fifty feet to the west of it. They are pumping from manhole one to manhole two. You'll, if you're out in the field, you could see a ginormous pipe running down basically the westbound inside lane of Silicon from manhole one to manhole two. Manhole three, which is down by the bus barn, is the one that Paul was talking about that had had flows coming out of it into our our storm system, obviously being in the low spot there. The bus barn also experienced flows coming back through their oil water separator in their bus bay and had to do a bit of cleanup themselves, so they were visiting us quite often that first day. We definitely had some businesses that were upset. The Lakewood Hardware Store right there to south of the Mattress Ranch. Mattress Ranch was very accommodating for Pierce County and the contractor. They were still squatting out there today with a bunch of pipe and and equipment. So what you're seeing today, if you were out in the field, is the emergency fix. Phase two, which will be emergency fix adjacent, which is basically get the pipe off of our road so we can let our traffic use our road again. So it'll be pretty much the same thing, but just kind of on the sidewalk and back on private property with regards to pumps and pipe. And of course, the pipe going out to the manholes will be dug underground, so we can still allow traffic to flow. Right now, this particular fix is being told to me as a couple of weeks. I have a feeling knowing Pierce County, they're overestimating, and it's going to be a little longer. So the green line is showing the the current route of pipe. The little rectangle next to manhole one is kind of showing where the pumps are sitting. Our turn pocket is very restricted right now. You can only fit two or three cars into the turn pocket to make a northbound movement off of Silicon. The blue line represents a manhole that will set to the east of manhole one, even though the green line area, the pipe is twenty-six feet deep. To the east of manhole one, it's fifteen feet deep. So there is a, what they call an outside drop that goes into manhole number one, which is part of the reason that pipe is falling apart is the off-gassing from basically doing a slip and slide in the man or the pipe. So they'll set a manhole, which is that little circle in blue. And again, kind of temporary adjacent, they'll trench under the road, set up some sort of pumping configuration outside and will possibly in the right of way and outside of the right of way with a pipe running down the sidewalk. And then they'll underground again to go out to manhole two, so we can, again, have traffic on Silicon. The purple lines are showing you the pipe that's coming off of Lakewood Drive. So obviously Lakewood Drive was the bubbling situation or really want this chocolate factory. So the purple line will basically bypass that fifteen-inch line and get it into the same downstream piping. So it'll be interesting above above ground to see some of that, how they're going to work it out with Mattress Ranch and and keep things ADA compliant. And again, this is phase two. Phase three will be ripping up manhole one and replacing, I don't think it was the whole stretch, but pretty close to the whole stretch of pipe there that's twenty-six feet deep. That's going to be quite the endeavor. Right now, there are shortages on piping and materials, so I'm assuming thirty-six inch pipe isn't just off the shelf. It's going to take a while to fabricate and show up. We are not sure as of right now when Pierce County has plans to pull the trigger. It is a concrete pipe, yes, currently. And I'm assuming it'll be concrete in the future, hopefully lined with something that will protect it and help it to last longer. So I guess next slide, we'll start giving you some visuals of, to the left was, again, a little after the fact, since I showed up a little later Wednesday morning, and they'd been dealing with it for a while. And on the right, you can, on the right photo there, you can see how it came out of manholes on the other side of. So that would be, the gentleman standing there is on the east side of the road, and the structure on the right is the west side of the road. So it was coming out and flowing across the road before I got out there. So thank goodness I wasn't there then. Next slide, give you an idea of, this is a configuration as of this morning. That's manhole number one. They brought it all the way up without a manhole lid, so they could have a bigger opening to shove all those pipes down into. And they have three pipes keeping up with the flows. It's like I said, three million gallons a day, it's a lot of flow. And from noon to midnight, they said it's pretty much just a full pipe coming at them. So I got a couple other, I think at least one or two other slides. My understanding. Yeah. Parkland area. So this is, yeah, east of I five, north of five twelve area, it pretty much services that that area. So there's the, I think that was an eighteen-inch. Usually it's a fusible pipe, but they went ahead and put flanges on it and bolted it all together. That would have been Friday night, early Saturday morning. So that's going from manhole, far distance is manhole one, and I'm almost standing on manhole two, taking that photo down at Graveling. And I think there's maybe one more slide. There you go. So it's the pumps taking up the inside lane heading westbound and part of our turn pocket to leave Silicon Boulevard and go to Lakewood Drive. So, yeah.
Point out, I didn't pick up on until you look at it, that's actually three separate pumps all set there. One, two, and then the bigger one on the far right. That was one of their, that was one of their challenges when they started on this, was trying to find enough pumping capacity, firm pumping capacity to handle the flow. So they started off with two six-inch pumps from Northwest Cascade who responded for them. But the pumps were not capable to handle it. At one point, they had eleven or twelve pumper trucks out there also trying to assist by pumping it out, but it takes them a little while to fill up. And the next one would come in, and you saw the one guy with the hose. At one point, I saw a picture where they had three or four hoses all, you know, aimed down there to the fluid. And they weren't able to keep up with it. They worked diligently to find a place that had a big enough pump that would work. They were reaching out to different jurisdictions. They'd reached out to the city of Puyallup. They ended up going with the rental company here that had a big twelve-inch pump that could handle it, even with two additional pumps to go along with it. So this is not an inexpensive operation that Pierce County is running. They were finally able to get everything set up earlier Saturday morning that could contain it. Department of Ecology, State Department of Health, our Pierce County Health were all notified as soon as the spill started. The good thing is, if you wanted to consider it good at all, is that this wasn't a private entity that didn't know what to do. So Pierce County Sewers, Pierce County Traffic Maintenance, Pierce County Surface Water Management, they all, they were all engaged in this. They have plans, they knew what, they knew who to contact. This was just a bigger issue than they've encountered in the past. Kind of the shame of it is, is they've been talking to us for the last eighteen months about their plan to replace this manhole structure and the pipe, because they've known for a period of time that it was degrading because of the hydrogen sulfide offgassing that occurs when you drop sewage down into another structure. It's in the liquid, it comes out of the solution, and it transmits down the pipeline. And that is very caustic to concrete steel, so it basically ate out the pipe and then it collapsed. There is an outside drop that Ted was talking about, just outside of their deep structure, because the one pipe comes in ten feet higher, because there's a twenty-four-inch storm line that's in the road. They went over top of that. And they keep saying, well, when we had to go over top of your storm drain, that line was put in in eighty-four. And I remind them the city of Lakewood did not exist as a city in eighteen eighty-four. That actually was unincorporated Pierce County, so it was their line, not our line. It's our line now, but it is what it is. It creates the turbulence, even though they try to make it relatively smooth. And that's what, once you get that boil going and the gases can come out, and then because there is the momentum of the liquid moving down, they, hey, look, water, stormwater, wastewater, it's all the same. It's just different constituents. I see you're making making faces over there, Councilman. And that that pulls the gases down the line, and they they will eat it, eat out the pipe and the manhole. Ted had indicated that they're going to replace the pipe, we don't know quite yet. I fully expect it to be a lined pipe. They have a ceramic coating they can put on these sewer pipes because of this. And the structure itself, it has a very specific and special kind of liner that they put in all of their newer systems, and when they replace them, those liners are are basically built for the situation. So it's not an off-the-shelf unit. That's why it's going to take them a little while to pull all this together and get it out there to take care of it. They had already done all their borings, primarily because they need to know what the soil conditions are. But they also were getting ready to put in some monitoring wells with Sealy Lake relatively close in proximity. They needed to make sure that when they're down twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty feet, they're not encountering groundwater. So they were getting ready to put those monitoring wells in late last week before all this hit. So now they're going to be in a scramble, and we already told them, you know, right-of-way permits and whatnot. Soon as you figure out what you're going to do, submit it to us, and we'll do a quick turnaround and get them out there. They're going to have to use specialized shoring called speed shoring. They say they they jack in each piles, they put the shoring in between, because the soils can be kind of gravelly out here. And what we don't want to do is we don't want a glory hole opening up for the whole length. And they're basically, all the other utilities and everything else is going to be in peril. So they're going to, they're going to have to follow some pretty strict construction standards. And yes, of course, we will require them to rebuild that portion of the road and per our standards. They're going to have to comply with our regulations like everybody else. Yeah.
What's the viability of the pipe on the the next section? You know, have they taken a look at the issues with regard to the existing viability of the pipe all the way down? Because if we start doing the road improvements, we don't want to have to obviously cut it up again and redo things.
That's a conversation we're going to be having with them. Our understanding is that this is the bad section. But I would like to have a conversation about any other similar situations they have in the city, where they are. When was the last time they did an investigation into those? And specifically, have they done a risk assessment? So typically, when you have infrastructure like this, you're looking for a risk assessment that says X, Y, Z. If it fails, what's going to happen? And if the consequence of the failure is small, you don't have to worry about so much. But if the risk may be small, but the consequence of failure is large like this, you need to spend more time paying attention to it and really investigating.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Who's farther?
So is that, is there any cost to the city of Lakewood in this?
The only cost, I would say, that we would have right now is staff time. They're going to be responsible, they're a hundred percent responsible for all the costs, everything associated with emergency response. They did reach out, asked us if we wanted them to work with their traffic control folks. They've done all the traffic control plans. We've given them some comments on revisions to that. They went in on on their dime, and they modified our traffic signal after they talked with us so that we would restrict various movements to stop backing traffic up east to westbound on Silicon Boulevard. No one's allowed to turn left, as you can imagine with all the equipment there, onto Graveling Drive. And we're not allowing a left turn from Graveling Drive onto Silicon Boulevard, it's only a right turn. It's just, it's too dangerous right there. So they've done the signal timing, they have bagged the signal to make sure that's not a problem. We do have a contract with them for signal tech work, but none of this would coming, will be coming back to us. The sewer utility, and they've already confirmed that they're they're covering all the costs.
Thank you. Thank you.
You think that drop is significant at the end of, uh, it's the Chambers. Yeah, when you go down, they, down in front of the Tacoma Revolver and Rifle Club, down to the end to the sewer treatment plant. There's just a huge pit that drops fifty feet down. So I just, there's, I think a two hundred feet of elevation change here. Mr. Rester.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, shortly after the, the, this started, they, they issued some advisories for, for Flet Creek and Sealy Lake, but Chambers Creek and, uh, and, and even some, uh, some areas in, uh, in the sound. Um, to do that. Have, have those been reassessed or, or lifted or? What are, what are we supposed to tell folks? We have, so we have residential properties, particularly along the, the, the area of Chambers Creek, uh, below the convergence with Platte.
So shortly after it happened, actually the next morning, I, I spoke with their, um, project manager, if you will, the emergency response project manager at the time. Uh, I told him that would be advisable to notify, basically to talk to Pierce County Parks, because they're the ones that actually own Sealy Lake Park and they, we manage it on their behalf, right? But to shut down any access to Sealy Lake Park until we confirm there was nothing going into it. That they notify the city Tacoma and they notify all the residents who live downstream along Flet Creek and then down Chambers Creek and so on down. Since then, they, they've expanded it to, with the health department, um, identified a series of, of areas where public are restricted from going into. They've also been doing water quality sampling. That's why I'm able to confirm Sealy Lake was not impacted. They've been sampling down at Flet Creek and they've been sampling at various points. Whether they have lifted the restrictions, I'm not aware. Um, that wouldn't be, they wouldn't be working with us, both the other local jurisdictions like University Place Town and Silicon and others. But, uh, we did put them on the hook for notifying all the residents. Jim has also been working with us. I'm our, um, communications manager, there he is back there. To make sure that we've been sending out all the notifications on our social media to let people know what's been going on and areas that they need to stay away from. Um, I spoke with apartment managers down around Flet Creek who called me, wanted to know more what's going on. And shared with them that basically there's no harm to them. Just make sure the residents to go, don't go playing around in the creek.
And when they go to do their last stage of their fix, which is replace the thirty six inch pipe for two or three blocks. And, and you, you, you said they would, they would do the road. Is that going to be an entire roadway or are they going to do a half lane or a one lane? And is there any value to us when we, when we look at that as to whether or not there's some future project of ours that would be more financially able to, to, to do if we combine our, our efforts with theirs?
That's a very good question. As far as to how much they will need to repair, I, I can't tell you because I haven't seen what their plan entails. Um, I know it's going to be a good swath of it. We'll take a look at our engineering standards. For example, if they are tearing into a half lane, they have to replace the entire lane. We won't allow them to get away with just a limited repair. I think it's going to be pretty significant what they're tearing out and pretty significant what they'll be putting back. And once we know more about that, then we'll look at possibly a partnership with them. Where when they do the repairs, we might be able to hook onto their contract to do the remainder of that short stretch of road. Uh, two years ago, we did Gravel Lake Drive and we brought it right up to Silicon Boulevard. And then we decided not to do the remainder from there over to Lakewood Drive specifically because we knew this project was coming forward. And because we didn't want to go in there and, and do a nice road job and have them tear it out in a couple of years. So we'll be working with them to figure out what's, what's the best way to get this complete repair and road done.
And it would, would county ARPA dollars be eligible as a sewer project to help us that way?
That's a good question. I, I'd have to look into it. My initial reaction would be for emergency repair like this, probably not. Uh, but it might be possible to use it for future sewer projects.
There's a, there is a very limited line item in the treasury guidance that says sewer projects for economic development or energy. Right. Uh, enhancements are eligible for ARPA funding. But it's a little narrow lane.
Any other questions?
Hi. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, it reminds me of an old, uh, now, you know, uh, how to favor Bill Cosby, but he had a whole routine about Noah and the Lord told him to. It was, it was going to rain, rain a thousand days, a thousand nights. And he said, you, uh, Lord, you can save a lot of time. Just back up the sewers and only have, have forty days of rain.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Just a few more items to update you on. Uh, last week, uh, GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association announced that, once again, the city of Lakewood had received their distinguished budget presentation award for, uh, year two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two adopted biennial budget. Once again, this is a significant achievement by the city. It's a commitment of this governing body and its, uh, commitment to the highest principles of government budgeting. It's a very, very positive reflection on all of you as well as all of the city, the city employees. Um, to put it in perspective in terms of, of, um, who receives this award, there's two hundred and eighty one cities and towns in Washington state. And we're one of, but thirty five who have received it. And then nationwide, there's eighteen thousand plus, uh, cities, towns and villages and, uh, a little over a thousand typically get it. So we're in very, very good company there. But more importantly, again, it's a reflection of, uh, the strong financial stewardship that this body has and the transparency that we have with, um, the allocation of our community's funds. Um, as a follow up from last week, uh, you know, our Community and Economic Development Department continues to go through the CIPA threshold determination process. As it relates to, uh, Western State Hospital's, um, facility master plan. So we have had some discussions, um, with, uh, DSHS. And so looking to, um, have a couple, at least two in-person meetings as well as perhaps a virtual meeting. Um, that would allow, uh, people to provide comment and feedback, uh, to DSHS as well as allowing an opportunity for, um, them to respond to that feedback and comments as well. Um, in addition, um, DSHS is also in the process of, in, uh, responding to the public comments that we have, um, received to date. And so they'll be providing those back to us, um, as, 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 as well. Um, last week, uh, the city, we initiated the two thousand twenty two comprehensive, uh, plan amendment cycle. Um, as you know, under state law, uh, cities can, uh, make changes to its zoning code and development regulations, uh, once, once per year as it relates to the comp plan. Um, the, the first part of this is to allow interested parties to, uh, bring forward any changes that they would like to, um, initiate. And so that process again kicked off last Monday, July nineteenth and closes at four thirty PM on August twentieth, um, next, uh, next month. Um, once all of those privately initiated amendments have been received, we'll bring it to the planning commission who may have some additions. And then likewise, of course, it'll come to this body. Um, and then ultimately that will result in the creation of the annual comprehensive plan, uh, docket that will then move forward for consideration through the planning commission, beginning later this year and early two thousand twenty one. Um, also wanted to just point out that the review of the tree preservation code will also be included as part of, of this docket as this body had asked for, uh, I believe several weeks ago. On the economic development front, um, we continue to see very, very strong investment here in Lakewood with a particular focus on housing, hospitality, restaurants, light industrial, um, also, um, interest in mixed use projects, um, particularly in the downtown subarea plan. And of course, actually the Lakewood Station, uh, district subarea, which was just recently passed by this, by this body. Uh, to put it in perspective, um, through second quarter, um, we have already experienced eighty eight point nine million dollars in private investment. Um, last year it was a total of a hundred and sixty million, which if you just did some simple math, it'd be eighty million. So we're actually ahead of where things were a year ago and last year was more than a banner year. So, um, things continue to go, to go well there. Um, also, and I'll have some more information for you perhaps next week. Um, we learned, um, earlier, actually late this afternoon, that RPAI has, they're calling it a merger, but it looks like they have been bought out by another REIT. Uh, based, I think in Chicago, but their areas of investment are primarily in the southeast of the country. And, um, so again, I'll have some more information for you on, on that in the near future. So, um, RPAI appears to have been, um, getting smaller and smaller. I know several years ago they had about a hundred and seventy one properties and I think the last time we checked, they were down about a ninety or, or so. Um, but with this merger, this new combined organization, again, is, the RPAI name is going to go away. Um, they will be part of, um, a hundred and eighty five properties nationwide. And again, most of them down in the southeast part of the country, Texas and a couple in the Chicago, Illinois area. Um, the Sound Transit System Expansion Committee, as well as their board, continue to deliberate how to address, um, some of their project cost overruns as well as some of their revenue losses because of the pandemic. Uh, long story short, they're looking at delaying projects. Um, how this impacts Lakewood is we have a Sound Transit Two project, which would result in platform improvements as part of the Lakewood Sounder Station. However, uh, right now, worst case scenario, those improvements would get bumped out two years from twenty thirty to twenty thirty two. Um, however, there are members of the Sound Transit Board, um, who are pushing not to do that. So then our improvements would stay on track and, uh, would, would move forward in twenty, by twenty thirty. The, uh, Sound Transit Board is, is expected to take action, uh, next week on, um, August fifth. So, uh, we'll keep you, keep you appraised, appraised on that. Um, also some, uh, good news to share. Senator Murray released her transportation appropriations earmarks, uh, last week. And, uh, our request for two point four million dollars in support of the last phase of South Tacoma Way between Eightieth and Eighty Fourth, um, is included in her, in her list. Uh, this is excellent news because it significantly advances the opportunity of us receiving these funds. Since our Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland has also included it on her list of earmark requests on the House side. So we are both in the House proposal and on the Senate proposal as it relates to a future congressional infrastructure, um, package. Um, some upcoming events, uh, later this week, um, actually two on Thursday, on July twenty ninth. Um, the Emergency Food Network is going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony for their new building, what they call North Fortieth. And, uh, that's at nine thirty in the morning and I know all of you are invited. So, um, I know we're going to have several staff, um, attending, attending that as well. Um, later on in the afternoon, actually early afternoon at twelve thirty, uh, the war, the, the Warriors of Change, the student presentations to the Lakewood community is going to occur. That'll be over at Clover Park High School. If you recall, this is a partnership between communities and schools, the school district and the city. And, uh, so, um, if you have an opportunity, you're invited to attend that as well. And again, that is, it begins at twelve thirty in the aft, afternoon. Um, next week on, on August third, National Night Out, um, we're going to kick National Night Out, National Night Out with dedication of the Harry Todd Park Improvements. And that will occur at, um, five PM over at Harry Todd, Harry Todd Park. Uh, we have sent out invitations to, um, a number of partners, including our state legislatures, your boards and commissions, uh, uh, the American Lake, um, Management District, the Rowing Club, Camp Murray, JBLM, and the list, the list goes on. As well as a number of community partners in the Tillicum neighborhood. Um, and then of course, uh, later on in the evening, um, we have National Night Out itself. And, uh, to date, there's fifteen locations that have signed up to participate, which coming out of a pandemic is, um, I think is really, really good. And so, uh, have an opportunity to, um, see some, uh, neighbors, um, face to face on, on, uh, on, on Tuesday, on Tuesday the third. Um, so with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Any questions from Mr. Coffield? Thank you very much. Go to council of comments, Ms. Mullis.
Mr. Mayor, um, a couple of things. I did attend the memorial for, uh, Mayor Lucas on Saturday and was interested. I like, I appreciated the way they laid out his history. So each decade of his, each stage of his life, he had a section that told all about it and the different, uh, things that he was involved in. So it was really, it was well attended. And then, uh, I would, I spent the weekend in Silicon. I went to the, the salmon bake on Sunday. That was really good. The salmon was delicious as always. But I wanted to make sure that if you haven't heard, that General Brown, uh, on Saturday the thirty first, they have, um, a, a mass, funeral mass at eleven thirty. That's going to be on McCourt Field Chapel Two. And then the celebration of life will be from one to three at the Tacoma Golf and Country Club. And that's Saturday, the thirty first. Thank you. That's it.
He died probably two months ago, maybe?
It's been longer.
Yeah.
It was a long time ago. Yeah.
The father of the C seventeen.
Yes.
Mr. Bradstetter.
Mr. Mayor, um, I, I do plan to attend the Emergency Food Network, uh, new building dedication, uh, that morning. And, uh, the, uh, the South Sound nine one one board is, be meeting, uh, um, still, still on Zoom, but, uh, this, 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 this Wednesday. And, um, well, and I will go to the Warriors of Change, your presentation by the, those young folks to see what they have to recommend to us. Um, on, on Thursday as well. Thank you.
Mr. Polkey. Is Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I also plan on going to the Emergency Food Network, uh, ribbon cutting. So I'm excited to see that and to see their new facility. Thank you.
Ms. Farmer.
I also attended the Celebration of Life for Mayor Lucas and it was very well done. And it was nice to set foot on Lucas Field, which I hadn't been on yet. So it was very cool. Yeah, exactly. Um, I will be attending the, um, Parks and Recreation Board meeting tomorrow night and it is still virtual, so that we have the opportunity to dial in some folks who might be on vacation now and then. Um, so that's it for me.
Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. Um, I'm mired in litigation in my day job last week, so it was challenging to get to a few events. But this week I'm going to try to do the EFN ribbon cutting on Thursday as well as the Warriors of Change student presentations. So should be an interesting week. And my only other question for the city manager, I saw a joint communicate that came out from the health districts about the potential rising, uh, Delta variant and what they may mean for indoor mask wearing. So the question is, do we now with the public require them to verify that they've been vaccinated before they come into the chamber going forward? Or what are we going to do with this?
So could, I couldn't quite hear. Could you repeat your question, please?
Yeah, the, the health department today came out with this recommendation on indoor mask wearing, especially for folks who are not vaccinated or if you're unsure of their status. So to keep the good things that are going on here, uh, what are we going to do with regard to engaging the public or posting? That if they're not vaccinated, they need to wear masks before they come to the chambers?
So, um, the policy that we put in place here at our organization, uh, for both our employees and for visitors is that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. And, uh, if you're not, you need to. Um, in addition, if you're coming in to do business in the city, um, you need to let us know. You know, if you're not vaccinated and we'll give you a mask if you don't have one. Um, but basically we're trusting in people to do what's right.
Looks like it's a fluid situation for all of us again. So we'll see how it all goes down, but thank you.
And also the, 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 the letter that the, that the health district leaders wrote today, that is not something that's binding. That's a, that's a suggestion. And, uh, so it's not a, it's not a mandate. And, um, you know, unless, w- w- we don't plan on addressing that until the governor takes action, if he takes action.
Thank you. Um. Did it on some of the events. Last Monday through Wednesday, I trekked back to Washington DC. It was the first ADC Association Defense Communities Live Meeting in about a year and a half. It was about one-third the normal scale, but a good program. Went through some quick takeaways. OEA, of course, is now known as OLDDCC or Old CC. It is now ingrained in statute. And so Patrick O'Brien, the director, feels pretty good about that because they're part of what's called the Fourth Estate. That is outside the the Office of yeah, Local Development Community Connections or something, something like that. No, they didn't pick it. The, the takeaways are DCSIPs funded, it looks like for $75 million. They're doing 70 applications, including ours, are being evaluated and by mid-September will have made the grants. What happened last year is now more candidly exposed that basically former Secretary Esper and by rumor, his wife, that's, I heard that from four different sources now, decided that they were going to hijack it essentially and, and make sure all the money went to quality of life, i.e. recreation centers and swimming pools for around bases or for, that can be outside the gates in smaller communities. And didn't put anything, as we saw in the results, didn't put anything for traditional infrastructure, which was the purpose. You know, a lot of backlash. Patrick O'Brien said, we did what we were told to implement by, by the department. There's a lot of backlash from Congress, new rules, see how it goes this year. There's a new, coming down the pike, a new $75 million program for noise abatement with respect to fixed wing and rotary wing aircraft. Which if you can think of a project, you know, I don't know what you're going to do. Put a, put a cap over the city so you can't hear the helicopters when they fly by or something, but I don't know how they're I don't know how you're going to do that. Met with Congresswoman Strickland. Issues involved, like there's no state advisor now for ADC. The state hasn't, doesn't have anybody actively participating in anything on a national level having to do with bases. The NDAA language that we need for the Clear Zone acquisition to clarify that you can or establish that you can use lease money and how to manage the lease money and the lease back and relocation assistance or things that her staff's working on. And they want to put in the NDAA. Talked a little bit about Chambers, taking out Chambers Dam, which is more a county project, but it certainly touches on Lakewood because of our involvement in the Chambers Creek Properties Master Plan. The fact that part of the environmental reconstruction and the, the potential enhancement of fisheries and, and hatcheries rebuilds, what happened in Lakewood, the Trail Program. So we'll be one of the jurisdictions involved as that goes down the line. And I learned from our old friend, Colonel Retired Lou Eastman, former 2-2 commander, who's now working for an outfit called Signal, that they're currently involved in a large project, bringing 5G to JBLM and 30 other bases. They're out there working now, people on site. So you're likely to get, instead of going into the Commissary and Exchange and having the single disappear, you're likely to have better coverage out there than we have out here. That's in a nutshell, but I learned in 92 degree heat and 80% humidity. Anything further before we go to executive session? You, the executive session? All right. We will now recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency. Litigation or potential litigation, the city council is not expected to take any action following the executive session, except to come back and adjourn the meeting. We're in recess. except to come back and adjourn the meeting. We're in recess.